Thank you, Sean, and good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, September twenty twenty twenty-two meeting of the Milton Select Board. On July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, Governor Baker signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. The act does not make any changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two to March thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. All votes during this meeting will be by roll call. At this time, I would like to introduce the members of the Select Board. Mr. Wells is away on business and will not be able to be with us. My name is Arthur Doyle. This year, I'm serving as your chair.
Mike Zullis, Vice Chair.
Aaron.
Sorry about that. Erin Bradley, member.
Roxanne Musto, member.
Nicholas Milano, Lieutenant Minister.
Anne-Marie.
Anne-Marie Fagan.
Anne-Marie and Lynn.
Lynn DeNabla, Executive Assistant to the Select Board.
Thank you all. And would you at this time join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible, liberty, for all.
Thank you. Item number three on our agenda is public comment. Just as a refresher, each speaker has up to three minutes for his or her comments. There's a total of fifteen minutes set aside for public comment. We would ask that anybody who chooses to join in public comment, identify themselves and give their address. So could we see if we have any hands from the attendees? I see some hands up. Margaret Carrolls, you're recognized. Margaret. You are on mute.
There we go. There we go. Hi, everybody. My name's Margaret Carrolls, and I live at nineteen Givens Street. And I'm also the co-director of the Milton Coalition. And today, I'm speaking to encourage you to bring back the Youth Task Force. As a reminder, the charge of the Youth Task Force is to explore expanded opportunities and safe spaces for teens ages eleven to eighteen to socialize and be productive in our community, including but not limited to out-of-school-time programming, and to make recommendations based on the results of such work for the consideration of the Select Board. As you are well aware, the Youth Task Force was instrumental in the process of establishing the Wildcat Den and its after-school program for middle school students. We are actually in the Wildcat Den right now because this is the night of our May Act meeting. The Task Force spent time meeting with the First Congregational Church, the Select Board, Parks and Recreation Department, and interested community members who who worked out operational details and solicited donations of equipment, furniture, and supplies. Indeed, this was the best version of Explore Expanded Opportunities we could have imagined. And it was and should continue to be the venue to surface real needs and make recommendations to the Select Board about realistic ways to meet them. Just like the Youth Task Force was able to respond to the after-school needs of middle school students by working with the extremely generous First Congregational Church, the Task Force needs to be around to be able to take advantage of other opportunities. Especially given the social and emotional toll the pandemic has taken on our youth, this is not the time to mothball the Youth Task Force. This is the only advisory group that is dedicated to the out-of-school-time needs for our young people. As we know, their need for connection is critical, especially as we are all rebounding from the isolation and loss of control we all felt during COVID. Let me end by saying the Youth Task Force enhances the ability of the town to meet the needs of youth and families. It supports the work of Parks and Rec, the library, and all other government entities that work whose work impacts youth. The Task Force comes up with ideas, does the research, provides recommendations. Most importantly, it includes the voices of parents and youth. This is one of the only places in town where youth have an official seat at the table. The things I imagine that could come out of the Youth Task Force are not necessarily only physical spaces like this one or programming. It could also include ways to increase coordination and access to what we already have going on in town. For example, the Task Force could look at ways to encourage more partnerships with businesses and nonprofit organizations. Again, I encourage you to please bring back the Youth Task Force. I have two two students here who would like to make brief comments, if that's okay.
They are most welcome.
There you go.
Hello, I'm Gisele Dimash. I live at twenty-five Houston Ave. And I am a member of Milton Youth Advocates for Change and a former youth representative of the Youth Task Force. While on the Youth Task Force, me and my other youth representative were able to express our opinions and reflect the needs of youth in Milton with our adult members of the Youth Task Force. This created a bridge between us and our town, between youth and adults, thus bringing it back to Milton is crucial.
Hi, I'm Maya Romadon. I live on Thirty-One Century Lane. And I'm also a member of Milton Youth Advocates for Change. And today, I'm speaking on the behalf of a former representative on the Youth Task Force, Cara Glazer. As a member of a former of the former Youth Task Force, I highly encourage it to be brought back. I was a youth member representing the middle school for my eighth grade year and the high school my freshman year. For me, it was an amazing opportunity to get insight into how the town government functions. But what really what was really great about the role how was how we how much we did to help the town's youth. Before COVID hit, we had lots of meetings, did plenty of research, and conducted site visits for about two years before we got the Wildcat Den up and running. While this was a major accomplishment since day one, we had been looking for longer term. We wanted to build something that all teens could enjoy, and now that life is more or less returning to normal, I hope that we can return to that vision. One, where high school students as well as middle schoolers have a safe social space for after-school. The Wildcat Den has made a great impact on after-school lives of youth. And should we continue on the Task Force's mission, we could do a lot more good for young people. I hope you'll consider continuing the Task Force as work. We did had a great impact on my life as a teen in Milton, and should be continued for the years to come.
Thank you very much, all three of you. Margaret, could I ask if you could arrange for all three of the commentaries to be sent to the Select Board?
Absolutely.
Thank you very kindly. We appreciate your being with us.
No problem. Thank you.
Our next hand is that of Catherine Simpson. Could we move Catherine up to speak, please? Good evening, Catherine. Welcome back.
Hello, thank you. So I just come here tonight to inform you that I've submitted to the Select Board a copy of the presentation that we made to the Board of Health last night. And that although the beginning is similar to the presentation that you've seen, the rest is more, excuse me, focused on the research regarding the health effects of artificial turf. When Mr. Wells spoke at the Parks and Rec meeting invoking the weight of both his former and current office, and there was sort of an it was implied that we didn't really understand the the what was at stake here. So I thought people might be wondering a little bit about who I am, and I hesitated because it's not about me, but it's about the safety of our children and our duty to protect the environment. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself and then why I'm supporting safe, healthy playing fields. So I've dedicated my life to the care and safety of children. I've raised two boys who grew up playing town sports, and I'm thankful every day that they did not grow up playing on artificial turf. I have a master's degree in education. I've spent twenty-eight years in the Boston Public School System, working for equity, inclusion, and social justice. I understand the need for kids to have a place they feel like they belong. I know the heartache of working with a child for years, talking him out of joining a gang, only to have the gangs win and to find out that he had been stabbed to death on the street when he tried to leave. So I understand the importance of belonging to a team, and I strongly support town sports. I've had fourth-grade student be absent for days, and when I investigated, found out she was working as a prostitute for a gang. I understand the importance of having a place to go after school, and I strongly support projects like the Wildcat Den. When it was apparent that there was a burgeoning mental health crisis in our youth, I went back to school to get another master's degree in clinical mental health counseling so I could continue to support children. I am a child-centered play therapist. I use the power of play to help heal children who have experienced unspeakable trauma. Developmentally, I know the importance that gross motor activity has on the regulation of the autonomic nervous system, and I often recommend physical activity in my treatment plans. So yes, I do understand what's at stake here. When I found out about the Lower Guile Project and started reading the science about the toxicity of these fields, I was shocked. When we know better, we do better. Boston will not be installing any new turf fields, opting instead for natural grass. There is overwhelming scientific evidence proving that these fields are toxic. There is evidence that grass fields can work when we look at Sharon, Concord, Wayland, all communities who have embraced grass fields. I am now submitting to you even more evidence. When we know better, we do better. Let's do better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see Deborah Milbauer. Could we bring Deborah Milbauer up to speak? Deborah, welcome.
Hi. Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I'm just going to read from my notes. My name is Deborah Milbauer. I am a town meeting member in Precinct Four, and I live at sixteen Winthrop Street. I joined Citizen Speak today to express my concern and dismay that the Select Board voted to discontinue the Youth Task Force. I come to this meeting as a public health professional, teaching public health at Northeastern University, and as a parent of two Milton public school students, one graduate from high school and one in tenth grade currently. I simply cannot understand why the Select Board would vote down extending such important work. The Task Force is an all-volunteer committee that has absolutely no budget allocation attached to it. This Task Force is needed now more than ever, and it's being discontinued. Why? This country is in the middle of a youth mental health crisis, and Milton is no different. Rates of anxiety and depression have been rising for years nationally, and here in Milton, even prior to the shutdown, was no different. Su- and nationally, suicide was the second-leading cause of death for people ages ten to fourteen. We need more resources and activities for youth, not less, and this Task Force would work to promote more resources and activities. Here in Milton, the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, now called the Milton Coalition, conducted a community assessment in two thousand nineteen. They found that twenty-nine percent of Milton High School students reported depressive symptoms in the previous twelve months, and this was before the shutdown, so we know now that it's higher. And forty-three percent of Milton High School students reported being nervous, anxious, or on edge for two weeks in a row within the last twelve months. As a college professor who teaches freshmen, so they're just coming fresh out of high school, I can tell you that the previous two years, my students brought with them the trauma and anxiety that they experienced during COVID. This Task Force, of course, won't solve the mental health crisis in and of itself, but it's one really important piece of the critical puzzle to support students engage in healthy and productive activities. The Youth Task Force may have achieved one task at hand, opening the wonderful Wildcat Den. You could see in the background of those students, it's such a beautiful space. But my goodness, there is so much more to do. We should be leaning in to youth mental health and wellness, not walking away from them, abandoning our adult responsibility to be as creative and innovative as this crisis takes. Lastly, there is no such thing as too many committees. Would we eliminate other committees that are appointed by the Select Board just because there's too many? The Airplane Noise Committee, the Council on Aging Committee, the Traffic Commission? If there's too many committees, why not pick one of those? It doesn't make any sense to me. I hope the Select Board will revisit the vote and reconsider its support of youth in Milton. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Deborah, you're welcome to submit your comments as well.
Oh, thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Daphne Confar, if we could move Daphne up, please. Evening, Daphne.
Hi there. How are you?
Welcome. And your address, Daphne?
Oh, eighty-eight Mar Ave.
Thank you.
I'm just here to support healthy playing fields, which is natural grass playing fields. There's so many reasons. I think that there's overwhelming evidence that grass playing fields can be a very doable project. And I'd like to be on this side of the trend. I think that, you know, Boston just banned plastic fields. I think that the whole country is going that way. And I would like to save the earth here in Milton and, you know, keep it as natural as possible and be a proud member of this green, smart town. And I think that grass playing fields are the way to go. So I just wanted to voice my opinion on that.
Very much appreciated. Thank you kindly for being with us this evening.
Thank you.
Seeing no other hands at this time, we'll move to the next agenda item. Item number four, discussion approval, meeting minutes, Traffic Commission, August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Is Chase Berkley is with us, the Chair of the Traffic Commission. Thank you, Chase.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board, joining you tonight from the Alexander Badgco Skating Rink. So I'll spare you the chaos of my background, if that's all right. So Traffic Commission last met on August fifteenth, and as a result of that meeting, we have one recommendation that would require your vote. And then there's a couple of items also from that meeting I'd just like to to discuss with you briefly. So the the only amendment we're requesting is for the intersection of School Street and Canton Avenue. So just a little background on that. So prior to the last change in that intersection, this was a two-way stop meeting that the through traffic on Canton Avenue was allowed to pass, and School Street had stop signs. And so at the beginning of the year, two thousand twenty-two, we recommended a trial of a four-way stop there because there were we met the warrant for the number of accidents causing injury within a one-year period, which triggered a stop sign implementation in all directions, being eligible under the state's warrants. So that trial went very well. We received a lot of positive feedback from both the immediate abutting residents and also the school population in that area. And it's been in place for several months now, very successfully. So the Traffic Commission recommended that we make that a permanent change for that intersection. So that's what we're asking for for our vote tonight in your consideration. And then there were two items from our discussions that I wanted to just bring to your attention. So the first one was for Long Meadow Road, the the small dead-end section that abuts the Wallaston Golf Course parking area. So there's been an issue brought to us by the abutting residents there that and it in our research, it turns out this is not a new issue by any means. But essentially, members of the course are parking on Long Meadow Road in front of the homes there, sometimes to the point where they're encroaching on driveways and actually blocking them and causing some frustration with the residents who live in that area. So we didn't recommend at this time a formal parking restriction. We thought it may be more beneficial to have some formal discussions between the town and the Wallaston Golf Course and maybe a consideration of a formal letter or if anyone has any friendly connections there, just to to open the dialogue. And I know that the course management has been conducting meetings and speaking with their membership. But this is essentially, you know, members of the course using this area to park and walk to the course as a shortcut as opposed to driving around and going to the parking lot that the facility has on site. So we're hoping that we can resolve this issue without, you know, the need for formal parking restrictions. But, you know, reserve that right in the future if this becomes, you know, to that level. And then the second item I wanted to just bring up was we we had commissioned an engineering review of Center Street between Adams and Brook Road to look at whether or not a truck restriction would be justified. So there's a group of residents up there that brought to our attention that there's a high traffic of heavy vehicles that use that corridor there. And along with that, a number of accidents that have occurred because of the narrowness, particularly on the Adams Street side. But it is a narrow road, and anyone who traverses through there will will, you know, recognize that there are several telephone poles that have been struck and, you know, needed to be replaced over the last few years. So we have we had beta engineering, conduct a traffic count analysis, produce all of the necessary study to submit to Mass DOT for consideration of a heavy vehicle exclusion. That includes collecting information about the volume of trucks at the time of day, the radius of turning from Adams Street and Brook Road onto Center Street, and then a review of all the accident history. And so we the the number of heavy trucks was a little bit underneath the threshold that Mass DOT recommends, but coupled with the geometry and the number of accidents, they still recommended that we submit the application to Mass DOT and for their review. And so the Traffic Commission agreed with that recommendation. So we're going to we're going to send that into Mass DOT. They will review it and let us know if they believe a heavy vehicle restriction is justified. If it is, we will come back to you with that and ask for a formal, you know, amendment to our own traffic rules and regulations to implement that. So those were the two items on our agenda that I thought would be mention-worthy. I'm happy to talk about anything that's on there and answer any questions about any of these that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Berkley. Are there any questions or comments for the Chair of the Traffic Commission? Mr. Zullis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chase, just a quick question. Thank you for your work on on these items. And I did note in the minutes a reference to traffic calming proposal. And and this that led me back to the report of the Traffic Mitigation Committee. And I'm just wondering if you are continuing to to review implementing and implementing the the recommendations of the Traffic Mitigation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Zullis. Yes, so we are so so we have a subgroup working on creating a a formal traffic calming policy. We have some model communities that have some some good examples out there. But essentially, it lays out a process eligibility requirement and a method of measuring metrics to determine whether or not in what traffic calming, you know, mitigation would be appropriate and for which roads it would be appropriate. So if you look at the town of Dedham, they have a very solid policy. So that that's one of our main models that we're going to focus on. And an interesting thing that actually I haven't heard come up in Milton, but Dedham actually has a ballot system. So if they do recommend a traffic calming implementation, they actually ballot the neighborhood and then the surrounding area, and they get a consensus of of the residents who live in that area, you know, whether or not they would support it. So I thought that was a very good good way to, you know, kind of take the temperature of the neighborhood before anything gets implemented. Because traffic calming is always a polarizing issue, you know, half half the population love it and half of it see it as a burden. So it is something we want to make sure we get right the first time, you know, when we're using tax dollars to build these things.
This is a wish your hand is.
Yeah, just just as a yeah, just as a follow-up, just to note, Chase, if you remember, when we when when the Traffic Mitigation Committee went through its efforts, we did have public meetings and meetings with the neighborhoods, and we collected information from the WikiMap. So so perhaps we can, to the extent we need to replicate some of those efforts that we that we went through back then.
Yes, I think that's a great idea.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Berkley? Thank you, Chase. There is there a a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the Traffic Commission held on August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two? Mr. Zullis?
So Mr. Chair, do I understand that we just want a motion to accept the minutes? Or does Mr. Berkley want a motion on Article Eight, Section Twelve of the Traffic Rules for School Street and Canton Ave?
And that would be the latter, Mr. Zullis.
All right. So so I think so. So I'll make a motion to accept the Traffic Commission's recommendation with respect to an all-way stop at School Street and Canton Avenue under Article Eight, Section Twelve of the Traffic Rules and Orders.
And to approve the minutes?
And to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Perfect. And thank you for that. You raised the question that I had in mind, and I'm very pleased to have this as it is. Ms. Musto?
I was just going to second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Seeing no hands, roll call, Mr. Zullis?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. And again, Chase, thank you for being with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. I will hang on for the next agenda item if there's any questions from the DPW on that one.
We'd like you very much to do so. Item number five is information and discussion, town-wide traffic calming needs and opportunities. The presenter is John David Corey. Could we move Mr. Corey up, please, for his presentation? Welcome, Mr. Corey.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. You ready for me?
We are ready.
Okay, thank you.
Always yours.
And so I just thank certainly the new town administrator, Mr. Milano, and the Chair, the Select Board, and the other members for allowing me to speak quickly. My name is John David Corey. I live at fourteen fifty-two Canton Avenue. And I'll just give a quick quick little history, and then I have a slideshow that I'll zip through tonight. So I know you guys have a full agenda, and it's already seven thirty. So I think most of you know that I was born and bred in Milton. So I have a long history in the town. And one thing that people may not realize is that actually my grandparents bought a house here in nineteen fifty-one. And they moved from Dorchester, you know, in nineteen fifty-one, that was a big move from going to Dorchester to Milton. So they had made it. They came to Milton, and my father was raised here, and I was raised here. So I think we have a nice history in the town. And I care about the town. It's pretty obvious with my history and some of the other projects I've worked on. Went to Pierce Milton Academy, and then I got a master's at MIT from the School of Architecture and Planning. I've, you know, I've been in other communities. I've been down in Florida. I've been in Beacon Hill. And I'm very active in my communities as far as like road narrowing, traffic calming, shade tree plantings, tree guards, sidewalks. And I always go for quality life every time. That is my underlying focus on all my projects. Um so I think some of you have seen my letter to the letter to the editor, uh so I won't repeat too much. But again, I grew up on Upper Canton Avenue. And at a time, you know, I'm forty-nine, so it wasn't that long ago, but you know, I was out running on uh Canton Avenue or walking to rebuild to the station. And I'm just afraid and now I'm back up in that area. I bought a house up in that area. And I just see uh so much traffic coming through and it's downright scary for me to see that. Um you know, one thing that I pointed out, and sometimes the planning board talks about all these high fences that are going up in these areas. And the high fences are not, they're there for to protect themselves from the high volume and the noise of the cars. So sometimes you drive up these around these beautiful streets in town and the houses are blockaded. And though that's telling us something, that's telling us that they're afraid about the street in front of them. And so we have all these isolated people that live on these streets, but then the neighborhoods become a road. Um so I wanted to um just say to other residents in the neighborhoods is that this is a town-wide issue. This is not a neighborhood by neighborhood warfare. You know, sometimes it's like, well, if I get a stop sign, I, you know what? It's a town-wide ailment that we have to look at. It really is a town issue. Um and I mentioned this at the Traffic Commission and Mr. Berkeley is here and thank you. That stop sign on School Street and Canton Avenue, I think is great. It's restored some order to that area. And I think those neighbors have really appreciated that. So I give it a big thumbs up. So thank you for that. But um you know, there are many reasons for the traffic pattern changes. Uh and the most obvious one is ways. And as we all know, ways is nothing more than an algorithm saving us precious minutes or seconds and rooting us into areas of the town that were never meant for this type of traffic. So I'm going to try to um share my screen. Can everybody see that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Um so I'm actually glad um um the town administrator put us down. It's not just traffic calming issues, but also opportunities. And I really try to make it feel uh present solutions to the to the to the problem. Um so one of the things I just use as an example is in my neighborhood, uh we have Canton Avenue. And these are from the town statistics. And this is as you're coming down Canton Avenue uh into Milton from Canton. Um you're coming down the hill, you're passing Margaret Road and there's a counter there. And I think the public should realize, the residents should know that those speed um signs are not only warning you of a sign of going too fast, but they're also counting the cars and they're also logging the speeds. So having them in the communities is very powerful information to be able to make decisions on. So for example, this is very scary, but this Canton Avenue, which is a one-time a rural country road scenic byway, now has thirty thousand cars a week on this road. The road is not built for thirty thousand cars and of those ninety-one percent were speeding. This is a these, this is a systematic issue in the town. And I just use this as an example. Um you know, we can talk about many things, why the traffic patterns are changed. I talk about ways, but for example, you know, here we have um Milton in the middle here, here's Canton to the south. One twenty-eight goes around the city and ninety-three goes in the expressway. Now, these roads, when they were laid out in the fifties, it was great. You jumped on one twenty-eight and you came around and you went up ninety-three to go into the city. Now, the problem is these roads are clogged most of the time. So what happens? The ways and the Google Maps, they put you through the very now popular send them through Canton Avenue, Center Street, uh with the trucks and everything um to Adams, to Squanton, to the expressway. And you know, this route is, there's many of these routes in town that aren't like this, you know, Governor's Road or whatever it is, coming from East Milton, coming back into Milton. Um but they were never really, these roads were never designed for this type of capacity. Um so I just wanted to show uh traffic calming is nothing new. We all can see it. Um but I wanted to just point out a couple of things. Sometimes we're told, no, you can't have this or there's regulatory issues. And just two slides here, just two simple examples. Uh this is an example of a speed hump in, you know, anywhere USA. Um not just some little parts of Milton. Um and this has a raised hump to slow the cars down through the intersection. And this drawing comes from the Federal Highway Administration's um traffic calming. So I guess the point is that this is standard items. These can be done. We don't need huge regulatory approvals for all of them. Here's another one from the same um traffic guide calming manual from the um uh FHA. And there's a simple road right in the middle. Low drama, road uh drama, easy to do, uh certainly slows the cars down. Um and this is another one. This is from uh Norwood and I saw this uh on my way to Norwood. And this is labeled as a traffic calming area. And this is Canton Street and Norwood. It's actually a very good example of a treatment coming into the neighborhood. You feel like you're someplace um and there's uh speed humps along the way. Um a couple of good examples. Um you know, there's been some people, you know, anxious about the East Milton Square. Um from my perspective, and I've been at this for quite a while, I think that the engineers did a fantastic job. Um they really made it a pedestrian connection. You can actually wa- I walked from the post office onto the other side. I mean, I grew up in the town. I can't say how many times I've done that. Usually you drive, you know, used to park right out front, but now you can park elsewhere in the square and connect through. So I would just like to point out that that's a very good example. Uh this is Governor's Road. You know, they've really um had an issue there and that they put the, you know, I don't know when the stop signs went in. I know some of those are regulatory issues, but uh they have speed humps and no truck zones. Um this is the one at the high school. You know, this is just an island that was put in to kind of keep people in their lanes, beautify. I mean, this island is is landscaped really well. Um some of the other roads like Harlan Avenue, they have speed humps in there. I mean, Harlan Ave is a is a is a great example of a country road that has been calmed and tamed. Um Hallen Avenue, I mean, this is a nineteen fifty's road, if I've ever seen one. The right of way is probably, I don't know, sixty-five feet wide and it was just two lanes up and down. And uh my grandparents had a house at the top of Hallen Avenue, so I know the area very well. And when I was growing up in their house, these islands didn't exist and we were not allowed to play out front because the cars would from, they would cut down Hallen Street and then down Hallen Ave to Randolph Avenue. And these islands have really worked well. And I point this out because these types of measures throughout the town, I feel as though we need them. Uh this is now Hillside Street, some other examples. I mean, Hillside Street used to be a cut through. They've implemented a couple of the stop signs. I know Chase might have an issue with that one, but uh they've also put the islands in and it's really calmed that whole area of the town down. And I think it's been very helpful. And the point is that when you when you calm the roads, you 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 trick ways because it's a slower commute that way. And you trick it to look at other alternatives, stick on the main roads, stay on the highway. Sometimes it will even say uh there's a slowdown six minutes, but you're still on the fastest route because it's always calculated. It's not interested in whether the neighborhood wants the cars or not. It's just a matter of who's going through, who can get through the fastest. Um this is an example. Um uh Mr. Berkeley's been super helpful with the neighbors up in Upper Canton Avenue. Um and this is an example of a uh of temporary program that um he put in at Dollar Lane. Basically, just sort of defining the spaces on the road and causing the cars to sort of be in their lane. And it's really made a marked difference uh in that area. Um in my analysis, and I'd like to see if the 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 um the Select Board would talk about this and I'm gonna talk about my action plan quickly, but um the DOT roads are absolutely out of control. And friends and neighbors of mine have been killed on these roads. Um and we have obviously Blue Hill Avenue, Route one thirty-eight and Randolph Avenue, which is ironic because Randolph Avenue turns into a little road as it comes through. I mean, these are major thoroughfares now. And the DOT must be held accountable. We cannot let up on them at all. And I'll show you that. Um to get back to Canton Avenue and the east-west, north, the the south to north cut through to get to the expressway. Um I think this has been on hold and Mr. Berkeley can talk about it, but this was a design that the town had. This is the intersection of Squanton and Adams Street. And as you know, sometimes in the mornings it gets backed up. There's no uh light signal there or anything. Uh if you if you look, this is the way to the highway this way. And then, you know, going down this way is going to uh Milton Hill up this way. At least Milton Square is down here and St. Agnes is here and the new firehouse is here. Um but for example, the original plan that the town hired was the opposite of where the direction the town should be going in. This plan showed green space being removed. Uh eminent domain taking people's front yards to make the road wider. Why? To put more cars through Milton? So this is exactly a spot where needs to be rethought. And we need to think about ways to um control the cars, but get it to the point where the roads become mainly for the residents, for the residents, uh not just for cut-through traffic. And it may cause some pain uh because there may be some queuing and things of that sort. But we have to remember that it's really for the better good. Do we want to have some queuing there or do we want to have two or three or four-lane highways running through the town? I mean, we could turn everything into Randolph Avenue and have a four-lane road, but I don't think anybody wants that. So we really need to think about that. Um so I'd like to give a quick opportunity. Um this is sort of in that same area. Um this is the expressway. Um and as you're coming off the expressway from the north from Boston, you have sort of that hairpin turn. I think most people familiar with it. Uh and you have sort of the the off-ramp there. And you come through and actually you pass over, you don't realize it, but this is Unquity Brook through here that goes out to the Ponce River. And I think I'm sure the Chair knows all about it from the Conservation Commission, but um this is actually a quite special space. Uh but for now, everybody comes through roaring through at pretty high speeds. And there is a neighborhood here. Um and these people would love be to be able to walk to East Milton Square. Uh here it is again in the aerial view. Uh and this is just, you know, kind of an average road in Milton. Um the DOT controls this area, uh but the town controls it from Custer Drive down. Um so I'm just gonna skip ahead. This is a photo that I took of the intersection coming through for off the highway. Um could we put something in there? Um traffic calming, beautification, gateway? Well, could we do it with something like this? Could we have trees that come in? Could we have landscape bump outs? Could people walk on the sidewalks and feel safer? Um these types of projects can be done all around the town. And I mean, um I I got an estimate from Mr. Berkeley's office and he said around fifty thousand. I think that's a little light. Um but I'm thinking around seventy-five thousand or so uh could do um building the curves and doing the landscaping here. So simple, quick fixes, I think, could really benefit the town. Uh this project here, to give us some quick background, I've actually sent this proposal to um some area foundations. And I'm hoping to see if we can get some 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 financial support on that. I also think this could be a good candidate for CPA money uh for these connections into East Milton Square for these residents in the area. Um so I just want to, then I'll sort of, I'll end on this slide, but I just want to say that I'm gonna put together an action plan for the board. And I'd like you to consider these items. Um and I can, I sent this in a letter, um but I'll I can send it again if you'd like. But one um formal, and I should have written these down in the slide, so I apologize, but I'll just do it quickly. Formalize the Traffic Commission to meet monthly. And after the each meeting, there is an action report that's generated. And all items, all requests go on the action report and then it presented every month to the Select Board. And on that report, we should have the number of accidents in the town. What are the hotspots? Where are the people concerned about? Which even, what temporary fixes can we give the residents? I really want to find even temporary fixes for these folks. Cause I know people contacted me to say, what can they do? And you know, so I'm relying on the town. Um all information, all traffic information should also be readily available. I know that the Department of Public Works is probably overwhelmed. I know Mr. Berkeley's like, wears all the hats from the town, besides the town administrator, but I got you. Um but you know, the stats of all these locations are wildly outdated. And I think that for the knowledge of the residents, we need to put that out there on the website. It's quite dated. Um and lastly, and probably one of the most important things, is the DOT. Um I think that, and I don't know the background of the town working with the DOT, but from this resident's perspective, we have given them too much leeway. Uh I find that the road of Randolph Avenue and one thirty-eight is special. And and I'll leave Blue Hill Parkway off for now. Those two are absolute highways and they are now major life safety issues in the town. And I would argue that we bring in the DOT, put a standing item on the agenda. And we want to know what the DOT is doing on a temporary bet measure, on a permanent measure. And I think the DOT representative should hear from the residents every month. And I think we'll see some more changes uh in the future. So I appreciate the time. Um I don't really have anything more right this now. You can ask me questions or you can move on to the next item, but I'm here if you want to um say anything. But I appreciate your time and um I'm passionate about the town. And I think that if we can start slowing these cars down uh and sort of build back these neighborhoods, we would all be a better town for it.
Thank you, Mr. Corey, very much. Uh we appreciate your initiative in the amount of time, effort, energy, work that you have put into uh your analysis and presentation. Are there any questions uh for Mr. Corey at this time for members of the board? Um Ms. Musto, you are recognized.
Thank you. Um I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank him for the presentation. I thought it was very thoughtful and very thorough and um very informative. And I think you have a lot of really great suggestions. Um and so hopefully those can be looked at. And I know you've been working with um Mr. Berkeley. So I think that's great. And we'll see what we can do because I think it is something that on the Select Board, we always hear about traffic issues throughout the town, all the different neighborhoods and so forth. So um definitely has to be more like a comprehensive look. And um I do like the fact of trying to beautify the areas coming into the town. I think that's wonderful. So I do want to commend you for that. Thank you. Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh Ms. Bradley, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um thank you, Mr. Corey. That was awesome. Um my one thing is bike lanes, bike lanes, bike lanes. It's actually three things. Um but with my kids and other kids um wanting to get to East Milton to spend their hard-earned money, um making bike lanes uh a priority and throughout our town is something that I will continue to say. It's also a traffic calming method. I tried to go down Tremont Street the other day in uh in Boston. And they are actually, they took away one of the lanes. And they put in bike lanes there. It's it's amazing and it's gorgeous. Um but it's definitely something that I would love to see more of in these traffic calming ways. So thank you.
No, thank you. And I think that uh certainly bike lanes are part of the the package. Uh I sometimes get concerned because sometimes what they'll do, the engineers will say, well, gee, we have a road that's too wide already. And they'll stripe it for bike lanes. And they'll say, we're done. And I just get concerned that the cars still to go too fast. And I'm sure that, I mean, I'm I, there's bike lanes on Broke Road. I mean, I see the high school, I see the middle schoolers on there and I don't even know if I would go on there. Um so but yes, I think I think the bike lanes are important. I would love to see connections into these Milton Square on the bikes and everything. That's like, I mean, that's part of any neighborhood or small town. Um but I just want to make sure that we do it in a way where also slowing the cars. I mean, I'm sure you would feel safer knowing that the cars are going thirty miles an hour and not you know, forty-seven miles an hour next to the kids on the bicycle. So, yes.
Mr. Zulus, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Corey uh for the presentation. Um and and based on the the analysis and the facts that were developed by the Traffic Mitigation Committee uh that finished its work just during COVID, you're correct that the residents of this town are more interested in safety and than they're interested in traffic congestion. And that's from the public meetings that we conducted. And that's from the WikiMap uh that we had, that we had public um uh participation through the WikiMap. Residents were more concerned about safety than they were about congestion. Um and so so and 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 that committee of seven people uh came up with a about a fifty-page report, which is a comprehensive review of the the uh the hotspots in town. And so I know the Traffic Commission has been working on that report and implementing uh the recommendations of that report. It was delayed somewhat uh during COVID. Uh but hopefully it will continue. And I I would certainly commend it to you because to the to the extent that you can tie in your thoughts with those recommendations because that really because that really, you know, at least in my mind, this is really a roadmap for a lot of what we can do in the troublemat, trouble spots in town, then uh then I think we can move forward more quickly than we've, uh Traffic Commission's been able to thus far.
And I can, I would, I mean, if I can be of any service or help push the ball or be the energy behind some initiative, I'll do it.
Uh, Mr. Berkeley was kind enough to stay through the presentation, and I just wanted to see if he had any comment that he would like to make following uh the remarks and presentation uh by Mr. Corey.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Chase Berkeley, DPW Director and Chair of the Traffic Commission. So, yeah, no, I I a hundred percent agree. Mr. Corey is on the right track uh to promote safety. You know, just as a reminder, the town is is a complete streets town. We've, you know, implemented a policy to uh consider all modes of transportation, and we receive grant funding um through that Complete Streets program. So there's a project coming up, uh do, uh, you know, we have a signed contract with the contractor to rebuild the intersection in front of the Pierce Middle School and improve the uh handicap access there and redo the signal. So, um, you know, historically, the town has implemented traffic calming and and traffic safety measures on the streets that we pave annually, and that that's really been the limit of of our reach. Um, the advent of technology, uh particularly with the LED lighting and and um the ability to put up, you know, relatively cheap radar signage, uh has allowed us to kind of expand beyond that traditional, you know, just sticking to what streets are we working on and and implement these more broadly across town and where we see um a lot of either requests from residents or, or, you know, our own observations. Um, so tha- that's really helped out. Um, historically, there really hasn't been a big budget for that, but we do receive some funds through ride share programs. So I think the last check we got was about twenty thousand dollars from uh trips that are generated by Uber and Lyft uh that the town of Milton gets, you know, funds from, and we can put that towards those efforts. And then if, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we have a state earmark for a hundred thousand dollars for traffic calming measure in the in the current budget. So that's again another resource that we can put towards these projects. Um, but certainly, you know, funding is is a key component to to doing all this work. So that's something that strategically we'd like to plan out um and and have, and, you know, get to our capital committee and get that into the works uh as well.
Thank you, Mr. Berkeley. And could I ask if you could stay on for the following agenda item number six for a few minutes? Uh, John David, uh, thank you, and I really appreciate the way in which you uh blended your work on the Shade Tree uh initiative in the town with this particular initiative as represented in the last slide. I see Mr. Zulus as a citizen being.
Yeah, just one thing that Mr. Berkeley uh uh tripped in my mind in terms of the technology. Um, one of the recommendations of the Traffic Mitigation Committee was a traffic engineer. We haven't funded that, right, to review all of the the, to take that comprehensive view. But we do have traffic modeling software that can tell us how different measures, uh, what impacts those will have beyond just the small areas, so that you can take more of a broader view. And we haven't been able to use it very much, because we don't have personnel, right? But that's one of the things that, again, if we have the personnel, if we have, if we have funding, that's something that uh that uh you might look, uh, you might look, uh, you might, uh, you might consider um working on going forward.
Hey, Mr. Zulus, could I ask if you would, um, on a sidebar, save that item for our retreat?
Sure. And I'll just, and I'll let you go. Uh, to thank you very much uh for my time. And uh I'll, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna summarize my comments, and I'll submit it to the select board uh as an action plan. And I'll just do the last pitch is that um enforcement is also part of this package. And I think the reporting of the enforcement to the public is part of the package. I think that's an important uh to re, to re, to um give back to the community what's going on as far as enforcement and also the town's commitment with money. I think that is a big key piece of the puzzle. I mean, everybody goes to a meeting or have cocktails, or you're having a coffee with somebody, and they bring up traffic quite often. And I think we need to put some money um into this issue. So thank you so much.
Thank you kindly. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Item number six, discussion rededication ribbon cutting ceremony for the East Milton Deck Project. Uh, Chase, could you, um, as we introduce this topic, bring us up to date on where things stand with the DOT and um their position on any dedication?
Happy to do that, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so Chase Berkeley, Director of Public Works. So, um, so we reached out to the DOT um to uh check to see whether or not they had any formal ceremony planned uh to dedicate the project at its completion, and and the answer was essentially no. Uh, but the, you know, we'd be happy to invite them in in the contract of McKay Construction um to the, to any ceremony that the town hosted. So um there's no timeline on their part to follow. Um, last Friday was was a soft opening of of the Manning Park, uh where all pedestrian infrastructure is now in place. All the signals and push buttons and everything you would need to get across there safely is in place. Um, there's a few punch list items, um line striping, uh fixtures that need to still be put in, but uh the contractor has uh reached substantial completion of the project at this time. Um, yeah, so they, you know, they asked that everyone stays off the grass until it's it's established. But outside of that, you know, the public is welcome. There's benches and new new trash facilities and in the like uh all deployed, um, so it's ready for business in that respect. Um, and so e- e- essentially, anytime, you know, from this point forward, that, you know, works out best to have that ceremony is available.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Berkeley. I would um add that at our last meeting under the Chair's report, I mentioned that there had been uh several expressions of interest in a dedication ceremony of meeting park and the reopening of the deck. Um, Selectwood Member Wells volunteered to uh lead or coordinate that with the parties that had expressed interest. He unfortunately cannot be with us uh this evening, uh but he will be pursuing this um with the chamber and others and getting back to us with an outline of plans and a proposed date. Uh, hopefully something that might just foresee Halloween for which other plans are being uh put into place at this particular point in time. So I'll just share that um brief background in addition to what uh we have from Mr. Berkeley and I have it on the agenda um for when Mr. Wells returns for further update or progress report, if that's acceptable to you. Okay, seeing uh no comments, we would move to agenda item number seven. Discussion approval request to amend chapter two, section seven and eight of the general bylaws regarding town meeting motions to move the previous question. You will recall uh that this was from a town meeting members initiative. Um, a town meeting member from precinct four, and we had our initial discussion as it was identified uh at our August ten meeting. And it is on the agenda at this particular time to see if there is any further discussion uh thinking by the members of the board on uh what was proposed. I have uh contacted uh moderator, Mr. Hyster, who was with us at the last meeting. He is in transit, uh, dummy home. He may be available at some point, but uh I don't see him in the attendees list at the present point in time. Um, I think, Ms. Bradley, you had your hand up first, so I recognize you, and then Ms. Musto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I have a few questions. Did you reach out to the town meeting member who drafted it for them to be present at tonight's meeting?
I did not have an opportunity to do so, but we did uh mention at the last meeting that uh while we could not take a position on the citizens petition, that we would continue a dialogue on this.
It's my understanding that that town meeting member has, is working with other town meeting members to tighten up that language and make sure that it really fulfills what the intent of it was. So at this point in time, I'm not ready to take a vote on on what's before us, because I believe it's gonna change.
Fair enough. And again, this is a continuation of the dialogue, and we appreciate that and the information that you provided, Ms. Musto.
Um, thank you. I was gonna say that we should defer it. I think we also should hear from the moderator himself on it, so as well as the person that's putting it forward. Um, so I would like to defer this for a future meeting.
If that's agreeable with all the other members of the board, I certainly can agree with that. Uh, Mr. Zulus, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree, uh, 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 just as a matter of procedure. So um, so is the idea that the citizens are asking us to sponsor an article for town meeting? And if we don't, that they will sponsor an article for town meeting, or do we not know? Or or are they just gonna sponsor an article for town meeting? Do we, do we? I guess the question is, do we know? Because because then it just goes to town meeting, right, if they sponsor it. Although for a special town meeting, they need more signatures. I think they need a hundred or fifty as opposed to.
Fifty.
Fifty. So, but if we do it, if we sponsor it, then, so I I don't know, just procedurally, I guess the question is, do we, do we know? And we don't have to, but if we know, that might be nice.
Uh, can I ask, uh, Lynn, could you promote uh attorney, Town Council Attorney Frey Tag uh to participate in place?
Mr. Chair, if I could.
I can say, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Bradley.
I'm sorry, if I could answer Mike's question, I can tell you that the drafter of the um of the amendment is in the process of asking that same question, Mike, um, and asking some fellow town meeting members on what would be the best plan of action for that. Um, so I really, you know, we did hear from the moderator the last time about it and about the uh, what what he thought about it. I would be interested to see what comes back to us from the town meeting member, since it was their initiative to begin with. So I I honestly have no idea where they're at with it, but I know that they are in discussions about what's the best route.
Thank you. And I have not heard directly from the proponent uh since the last meeting on August ten. Mr. Frey Tag, welcome. It's nice to have you with us. Okay, so we are agreed that we will defer this. And um we will check in with the proponent and with the moderator alike. Evening, Mr. Frey Tag. Uh, did you wish to have any comment on this last item? No? Seeing none, uh, we'll move to agenda item number eight, discussion approval. Uh, Sustainable Milton, Presentation of Warrant Article Regarding Climate Action Planning in Milton. And uh we have a presenter on that. I do not see him in the attendees at the present time.
Mr. Chair, um, Alex Hasha and Josh Lee are both here. Josh, um, from the Planning Department was gonna introduce Alex, I believe was their plan.
That's strategy. Thank you, Josh, welcome. Alex, good to see you again.
Yes, so to 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 briefly introduce this uh item, um, this uh agenda item and this warrant article are coming out of a a series of of meetings and discussions held between the Planning Department, Engineering Department, and Sustainable Milton on Milton's climate readiness and climate action uh over the next series of years. Um, and it began as a discussion on uh declaring the state of sort of climate awareness and and climate uh emergency, um, and has since um been discussed and modified into the warrant article that you have before you, which which Alex will will detail. But uh this is one part of a of a broader effort in our departments to really uh center climate action in the work that we are doing and planning efforts that that we're doing townwide. So we are grateful for Sustainable Milton's leadership uh thus far as as they've taken this warrant article and really uh turned it into some we, uh, in in at least the Plan Department think, um, will will have some some great value to the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Alex, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So um, uh, my name is Alex Hasha. I'm a board member of Sustainable Milton. Uh, and uh, as Sustainable Milton, we have uh been working to build support for uh climate action planning process uh in in Milton for much of this year. Uh, we've been holding um uh, what we call eleventh hour standouts on the eleventh of every month to get residents to come out and in support of of taking formal action. Um, and uh over that time, sort of learning by uh by studying the actions that other towns in Massachusetts are taking uh to uh to respond effectively to climate change. And so the uh the proposal we're coming to you with you now uh is really motivated by that, by that study. We we've um tried to move from uh sort of asking the town to handle it to being being uh of help ourselves um and and uh getting this process moving. So I will share my screen. I have a a few slides here just with background information. And oops, wrong button here. Uh, but really, the the goal was to uh you bring a proposed path forward to you and 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 turn this into a discussion, uh, since, you know, the folks at Sustainable Milton working on this, uh, we're not experts in in town processes uh for for this kind of planning, and so we're very open to your feedback and recommendations for how best to move forward. So the, you know, working backward from the outcomes that we're hoping to see, uh, you know, we we feel strongly that Milton needs to accelerate its response to climate change. Uh, and not to to go down a rabbit hole into the science, but really, you know, starting in twenty eighteen with the ru- release of the IPCC um special report calling for uh, you know, worldwide global emissions reductions to keep global warming within one point five degrees Celsius uh rather than the old target of two degrees Celsius Celsius or higher. Uh, that's triggered a a great deal of um action across across the world uh to uh e- accelerate um efforts to to reduce emissions globally. Uh, no matter where you stand on the realism of of hitting those specific targets, uh, there's no excuse to uh not take action, because even if one point five degrees is 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 difficult to hit, um, it's, you know, every degree of warming matters, uh, and so is a large project um that we as a society need to embark on, um, even if it may take longer than uh than some people hope. Um, Milton's already experiencing hazards that are exacerbated by climate change, including intense storms, flooding, and heat heat waves and drought um that were all detailed in the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Report uh that the the town produced in the last few years. Um, another reason why now is a good, good time for us to get started is that uh last year, Massachusetts legally committed itself to steep greenhouse gas emissions reductions uh in the uh Act Creating a Road of Math uh for uh emissions reductions in Massachusetts, fifty percent reduction by twenty thirty, seventy five percent by twenty forty, and net zero emissions by twenty fifty. Uh, these are very significant emissions reductions that will not occur uh without the uh participation and alignment of all levels of government and the state. Um, and also, uh, as state and federal policies start to align around these targets, it creates really time sensitive opportunities for us as a town um to access significant support, both through financial and other programming uh to to embark on energy transition and resilience projects here in town. Uh, and uh, those are opportunities that we don't want to let pass us by. So these are all, I think, reasons for us to uh put more more of a formal coordinated effort behind this here in Milton, uh, making sure we're taking advantage of those programs uh under the Inflation Reduction Act that was passed at the federal level. And there was a, another large climate bill passed here in Massachusetts uh in the last couple of months. The uh, the, you know, the aspects of emissions reductions that the town um can have a big impact on are in areas of building codes, waste can have a big impact on are in areas of building codes, waste management, public transportation, uh, infrastructure and and other infrastructure development plans, that need to be aligned with the Massachusetts carbon roadmap. And also, um, you know, with with all the action going on at state and federal levels, there may be, uh, some unintended consequences or obstacles experienced by Milton residents and having a a formal process to, uh, respond to this situation. We'll make sure that that's identified and resolved in a timely manner. Um, so what we were requesting of the select board, um, and and this is really, you know, initially motivated by looking at how other other towns have embarked on this process, is to one, establish a committee, uh, charged with researching and developing a climate action plan. Um, it's gone by different names in different towns, but something like an, you know, an energy and climate committee, um, and to and to charge it to pr- to produce a, uh, a climate action plan, in a time bound process that's inclusive and and gathers input from stakeholders across the town. It would need to come with some funding. Uh, typically, uh, these committees, uh, retain professional consulting services, uh, and and Milton, uh, has has worked with consultants like this before on on, uh, on the green communities work. So this is something that there's a precedent for. Um, and third, we we're asking, uh, to create a mandate for this work through a, uh, town meeting article, uh, that we've circulated a draft of your for your feedback. So I've 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 heard, uh, you know, feedback from several people that I've gone to for advice on this, that that, you know, a town meeting article may not be necessary at this time, uh, since what we're really asking for is the creation of a committee, uh, with a, you know, charge to develop a plan that that this may be something that you as the select board can simply do uh, with without town meeting support. Um, and so I just wanted to explain some of some of the reasoning behind why we thought, um, a a town meeting article might be appropriate at this time. Uh, but I really want to, you know, open it up for the discussion, uh, because I'm, you know, not a hundred percent committed to to this point of view. So first, you know, implementing a climate action plan, it's it's one thing to write one, uh, and you could probably get a small volunteer committee to go off and and, you know, spend a few months writing it and come back, uh, but actually acting on the plan would ultimately have, you know, significant impact on residents and their transportation and energy options. Uh, a a town meeting article would clarify the level of public support for the bold action that's necessary, um, and and probably attracts, um, you know, useful context and feedback. Um, the outreach effort itself to to get a a town meeting article approved in town meeting would would drive this topic more into the forefront of public consciousness, which I think is important, um, that that we get people talking and, uh, and, you know, thinking about what this means for them and hopefully would support better, um, engagement with the with the committee's plan development process. Uh, and finally, um, you know, to create some urgency that the the plan be produced in a, uh, time bound manner. I don't think we have time to spend, you know, 18 months to two years coming up with a plan before we even start to act on it. So I want to be respectful of your time. There this, uh, slide deck, uh, was sent over for you to review. There's a bunch of additional informational slides, um, if if those are necessary. But I think at this point, I'd like to yield the floor back for any, uh, questions or feedback.
Thank you very much, Alex and Josh. Uh, this point in time, the floor is open to the select board. Ms. Bradley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So I I know I say this a lot, but I stand firm that no committee should be disbanded or created until we have a firm gap grasp on what is going on with our committees currently. So that's where I stand. I don't think we should have gotten rid of the youth task force the other week. And I don't think we should create a new climate task force this week. I just, for me, I I know that everybody wants business to keep going as normal, but I've been waiting now over a month for some answers that have not been answered, um, by somebody. And I have to say that I feel like it is being stalled, that this 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 project is being stalled. So I will say no to any new committees or disbanding committees. That's just where I'm standing right now because we have to make this a change. We have to make this change.
Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, so with respect to committees, um, you know, I think my my view is that committees are how we get public participation and how we get more transparency. And that's what we've been doing for the last four years. We have committees and we have public participation. And as a result, we have more transparency. Um, uh, so, uh, so that's just the general view. Um, uh, with respect to this, uh, it seems to me, and this is for Mr. Hasha, just my my view of this is um, uh, that rather than come out with an article right now, I would see if this board would approve a committee to dig into the details and to be able to support and to provide background on what a 50% reduction in the 1990 baseline by the year 2000 2030 means for the town, right? We could we could present this article to town meeting, but it seems to me there are a lot of answers that 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 whoever presents this article are going to need. And someone needs to come up with those answers, and that may well be a committee, right? Um, so, so I'm in favor of committee and I, you know, I, and I, you know, and I I respect the 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 work of the our 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 new subcommittee and that they want to do things. I'm I think I'm a little bit more on the side of I I love what I'd like to keep government, uh, moving. Um, but but maybe there's some compromise there, right? Maybe there's something that we can work out. And and maybe you don't want to go this way, Mr. H. There's just suggestion. I think I think the best way to go is get a committee, dig into all the details so you have a lot of a lot of, uh, support so you can answer all the questions at town meeting because there'll be a lot, uh, and then move forward with it and move forward with it in conjunction. Well, let me step back for a minute. The other way to go is we can establish, we the select board can establish a committee, but we don't, we don't control the purse strings. Uh, town meeting controls the purse strings. So the other way to go, I think, would be to go with a more limited article to try to get some funding and to support some funding for the committee, right? And then, uh, and then have a committee dig into the details and, um, and come up with a with an article. And and again, I don't want to put this off. I, you know, I I gen- I support this, right? Uh, the question is how best to do it. And, um, so those are a couple of ideas. Um, I, you know, as I sit here just kind of freewheeling, I probably, I I guess I think that, you know, uh, seeking some funding, um, you know, having the select board establish a committee, seeking some funding for the committee and then coming forward with an article may be a process you could think about, but that's just my my thought, so, for what it's worth.
Ms. Musto.
Thank you. Um, I would say certainly that we support the goals, um, and what we all need to be conscious of our environment. We are, I think we could all agree about about that. I think, you know, Ms. Bradley and myself have been tasked with looking at the committees. Um, and the problem that I have with this at this point, I would support what she said in in terms of find, you know, setting up a new committee. And to Mr. Zulus's point about, um, that's how you get committee, I mean, a residence involvement, I don't think that's so. I think if you're an open person and you're transparent and you're welcoming and you, um, reach out to all different walks of the community, then I think you don't always need a committee for that. Um, Sustainable Milton is a great example. They have a committee that does great work. Uh, they're not a town committee, but they they're an organization of made up of members of our community that do great work. So I don't think another committee is always a solution for everything. And to say, I sort of take offense to saying that that's the only way we can get people involved. I I don't think so. I think if you are the type of person that, um, I would hope that we all are, that you're going to listen to any residents that come before us. And, um, certainly, you know, I I think we first have to look at what we have. And as far as the reporting, all of these committees that we currently have are supposed to have certain reporting guidelines. I don't think that they've been meeting those. Uh, some of our committees that we have, they have agendas or maybe they don't. Some of them I've gone on, I don't see minutes of. So, I mean, you, I I think we have to be realistic too. And, uh, like I said, I think, you know, Sustainable Milton's doing a great job. They could put an article forward as a citizen's article for town meeting too. So that would be my point. Thank you.
May I go to Alex first, Mike, and then back to you?
Well, ju- just let me just let me respond because, look, nobody said that that, uh, that having town committees is the only way to get people involved. But it is a way to get people involved in town government and to open up town government to them and when the the workings of town government. So yes, there are many ways to do things in town. But one way to have public participation in town government and to have transparency as to what is going on in town government is to have committees working with town government. So it's not the only way to do it, but it's been a very good way to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Um, Mr. Hasha, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, speaking as somebody who doesn't have a a a ton of experience, uh, engaging with town government, and I I I think what I was hoping for out of, uh, a committee formation is that it would, first of all, give the effort a greater sense of legitimacy, uh, than, you know, a a private citizens group, uh, sort of banging the drum about this, I think. But creating a committee signals that the town is prioritizing, uh, and spending energy on the effort. And that, you know, I I suppose I expected that, uh, a committee would have more, uh, sort of guidance, um, and and mentorship from experienced members of town government on, you know, how to operate efficiently and effectively. So I don't know whether those are are, um, you know, reasonable assumptions, uh, but it's kind of what was going through my mind, uh, in in requesting a committee to be formed. And that, you know, the the process of appointing the committee would would provide some energy for actually finding and recruiting the appropriate people, uh, to to participate on that. That's something that's, I think, been difficult for Sustainable Milton to to do on its own, um, with the number of volunteers that we currently have. Um, you know, as as transparency issues, uh, I I I have to say, I, you know, I agree. Uh, it's often difficult, uh, as a as a resident to, uh, dig into what committees have done. But, um, you know, I think this is a very, uh, urgent town and global issue. And I I'd hate to see, um, uh, it it delayed over over a political issue like that.
Alex, could you bring us up to date, um, evenly on, um, the current status of Sustainable Milton, please?
Sustainable Milton is a a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, uh, 100% volunteer driven, uh, by residents of the town of Milton, uh, and I I became involved more recently, so I'm not a great, uh, uh, source on its sort of historical contributions to the town. But it played a significant role in, uh, the effort to make Milton a green community. Uh, the, uh, Milton Alternative Energy Committee was reactive, um, several years ago and and, uh, helped the town, uh, measure its, uh, you know, carbon emissions and also, uh, make significant reductions in municipal energy use. Uh, I think now the the focus for climate action planning would broaden from municipal energy, uh, sources and the those emissions, which are only about 2% of town emissions overall, to townwide emissions, most of which comes out of, um, you know, our our homes chimneys and our our cars' tailpipes and the electricity that we consume as a predominantly residential town. Um, does that answer your question?
It does. Very helpful. Thank you very much. And I'd like to recognize Ms. Musto, followed by Mr. Lee, Roxanne. You're recognized. You're on mute, Roxanne.
I just wanted to say to Alex and the group that we're not saying that we might not be open minded to having this committee, but we have to do a little work first, um, you know, Ms. Bradley and myself. The other thing I I do want to just go back to one thing that Mr. Zulus said about when you have committees, that's how people get involved and things like that. When you have committees, you have to make sure you're having lots of different people on committees and not the same people on every committee is one thing. The second thing I would say to that is that, there are other voices out there and sometimes people aren't heard and they might may or may not want to serve in a committee, but they do want to be involved. Um, and, you know, look at the wonderful presentation we had tonight from Mr. Corey. Um, you know, I, so I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to get into a this and that and going back and forth on this. I I don't want to waste the time on this, except to say that, you know, Ms. Bradley and I are going to look at the committees and and we're thinking of forming new committees, then we certainly have to be cognizant of that. Um, and that's all I want to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I I just wanted to say also the the planning board would be more than, not Rob, rather, the planning department would be, uh, more than happy to continue working with Sustainable Milton, not in a committee context, but as as, uh, sort of mutual partnership to, uh, put together some of those sort of informational resources that, uh, select board members, Zulus, was was discussing, um, and and doing that that legwork, um, as as town staff and with Sustainable Milton, uh, with 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 the select board's direction.
Thank you very much, Josh. And, um, Alex, was your hand up continuing?
No, I I didn't realize I had to press it again.
Mr. Zulus.
Ju- just a final thought on the committee, committees, just in terms of background. You know, when we when we started the Youth Youth Task Force in 2018, when we started the Traffic Mitigation Committee, when we started the Municipal Broadband Committee, we brought in people who hadn't been involved in ha- town government before, and they they got directly. And when we started the Equity and Justice for All Committee, we brought in people who hadn't been involved in town government before, and they add, they they have added, they they added then and they continue to add significant value. And they they know, they certainly know a lot more about what's going on in town because they're directly involved. So, so, you know, uh, when we've done that before, I think we've increased participation. We've got more people, more people who hadn't been involved in town government, involved in town government, which I think is the goal, uh, because the extent you can get more participation and more transparency, then you're going to have more legitimacy to town government. And that's what we we tried to do over the last four years, and and I think it's a, I think it's a worthy effort.
As I, um, read the materials in preparation for this discussion, and thought through many of the points that were made, I was wondering if there's any intercedent or a first step that might be taken toward an eventual committee. And this ties in a little bit with what Ms. Musto and Mr. Lee put on the table. And that is whether or not, um, within Sustainable Milton, there might be established a working group on this specific issue. Um, one that might be able to apply to the town for funding to do its work. And out of that evolve, when the time is appropriate, uh, everything that is needed for consideration of a committee, whether it's established by the select board or it goes, uh, to town meeting, uh, just a thought along those lines. Um, Alex, you addressed something that was on my mind too, uh, among several of the points. And that was, um, the qualifications of the members of the committee. Um, having information about that, uh, would be very, very helpful. Uh, how long would, uh, the proposed committee's members serve? Um, how many members might there be on such a committee, uh, when it were to start up? Or if initially a working group, uh, things of this nature to be yet, uh, fleshed out and considered. So this is just a few additional comments, uh, for the discussion and reaction. Alex, your hand is raised.
Yes, uh, if if the effort is to stay within Sustainable Milton in the short run, um, I think what we uh, could use most is is the sort of unofficial uh, could use most is, is the sort of unofficial, um, assistance of, of folks with more experience getting things done in town, um, who can help us find, um, you know, you know, I need answers to those questions as well, right? I think, uh, my personal history is that I, I have, uh, been increasingly focused on, on, on climate issues over the last two years. I, I, uh, re-steered my professional work, to support it, but I'm, I'm a, a data analyst, uh, by profession, so I, you know, my, uh, uh, expertise is, is more in sort of acquiring, working with the data, um, uh, related to climate change. There's a many other, uh, dimensions to this problem, um, and, um, I think we, we need, um, you know, a broader discussion with more points of view. I am a hundred percent in agreement with that sentiment to find and bring in the right people, uh, to make this an effective process. Again, I was maybe assuming that forming a committee would sort of set, set processes in motion that would help that happen, uh, but if, but if it can happen informally, uh, through, you know, mentorship and advice, the folks on this call or other people that you might want to connect us to, uh, I think that would feel like progress as well.
I, I think it's fair to say that there's a consensus of support, uh, for the work at hand. Question is, how do we take the first step? And how can we support Josh? You're recognized.
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, a- a- as I, I said previously, uh, the, the planning department and the engineering department as having taken some, you know, pre, pre-steps in, in initially, uh, outreach into Sustainable Milton are, are happy to be that, that first step, uh, sort of working group, um, to, to really answer some of those initial questions that, that you, you shared. Um, so, so our department is, is here to, to help in that regard.
Would, um, the select board be supportive of the notion of a working group as a first step?
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Please, Ms. Bradley.
Thank you. I don't think that they need our approval or well wishes or blessing. If they want to start a working group, they're an individual 501(c)(3). They can do whatever they want. They're a nonprofit. And I don't know why the select board is getting involved with what a 501(c)(3) does if they want to do that. Um, you know, it, it's fine with me if they want a working group and want to invite somebody from town government on there to, to join them. Um, but, you know, I still stand firm in my fact that, that I do, will, I will not be voting for any new committees or dissolving any committees until our work, Ms. Musto and I's work is completed. And, um, and I'm very adamant about that because now what's going on almost three months and, um, and it, it's, again, feels like it's dragging a feet.
We'll look into that certainly, um, but at the same time, the, the point is, um, we're talking about the possibility of having a working group that would have some uh, support from the planning office and so on down the line, uh, as a first, the initial first step. Mr. Zulus, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Sustainable Milton has come to the select board for assistance uh, with a, a project that they have that they would like to take to town meeting. Um, that is why we're here. That is, I presume, why they're on the agenda. So the question is, how can we assist them? If we can't assist them putting together a committee, if we want to assist them, maybe we don't. Maybe we just want to let them go off on their own and do what they want. That's one way to go. Um, or we could, we could, you know, there's several different things we could do. We could set up a committee and help them, right? Or we could, we could, you know, have some, some people help them in our departments, or we could, or we could, you know, have some informal help. But it seems to me they've come to us for help um, on how to affect something in government. And the question is whether we're willing to do that. I, I, I'd like to see us do something, uh, to help them.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this has now moved into what is a personnel issue. Um, if they want to have somebody from the planning board or somebody from Josh's office help them, then that's up to the town administrator. I mean, I, you know, I'm all for giving them help and I understand why they're here in front of us today, and it's very important. God, God knows, my child knows more about climate than I do, and I think that's amazing. But at this point now, we're into a thing where it's either we up or down vote the committee, or he takes it to town meeting, or he gets help from the staff, which is a town administrator issue. I, I mean, we can take a vote on whatever you want, Mike, but I, I, you know, I don't know what else the options are. Those are our three options.
Well, I think there's no request for a vote, um, but there is a, this, um, proposal for the third option, and it's just a matter of having a consensus that that's agreeable as a first step. That's the notion of the working group within Sustainable Milton that would flesh out a number of the ingredients that were discussed that are yet to be determined that may later on at an appropriate time come to us, at the town meeting as a committee proposal.
Well, I would defer that to the town administrator and the workload of the departments. I have no idea what their workload is, so I can't make a decision on that.
But there's no objection.
No, there's no objection. If they want to do that, that's totally fine, but this is an administrative piece. This is not.
Um, let me ask the proponent, Alex, would that be an acceptable first step from your point of view?
Um, it's not what I was hoping for, uh, but I'm, I'm happy to, uh, discuss what that would look like with, uh, with the town administrator and the, and, and, uh, the planning department.
And Mr. Milano, if we may have your, um, thoughts on this matter, please?
Very happy to connect with Alex, Josh, Tim, um, and I know Mara in the DPW Engineering Office has been involved with them as well and doing good work. Um, and I, I think it is helpful to hear from the board that, you know, a general approval of this idea and, and openness to working forward with this, um, past experience that hasn't necessarily been, uh, my experience at a board is always su- supportive of some of these more tenuous political, um, approaches. So I appreciate the feedback and direction that I've received just from this conversation. That has been helpful for, for me as well.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. So I think we have a consensus to move in the direction that's been discussed. And, um, with that, Alex, um, thank you for bringing this forward. I would just have, um, one other suggestion, and that is that you might, um, touch bases with John Kiernan, who's the chair of the town's Conservation Commission, the Milton Conservation Commission, as he and his commission may have some interest in what it is that you're proposing as well.
Thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your initiative and for being with us. At this time, item number nine is the, uh, discussion approval recommendation of the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee to the owner's project manager, Mr. Milano, can we turn to you for the intro on this?
Sure. Uh, Tim Zarwinski will be representing the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee on this item if he could be brought to the discussion.
Certainly. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chair.
You were recognized. Thank you for being with us.
Uh, uh, thank you kindly. Um, one thing I would ask Lynn, um, is to check and see if, uh, Therese Desmond is in the participants. Um, she's one of the co-chairs of the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. Um, I don't know if she was able to make it tonight, but, um, if she's here, it'd be great, um, if she could, uh, join me.
I don't see her in the attendees. Tim?
Okay, that's totally fine. She's, she's out of town, but, but she might be able to make it, but that's, that's completely fine. Yes, excellent. Um, so thank you very much, uh, Tim Zarwinski. I'm the Director of Planning and Community Development. Um, I staff the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. Um, I, I, I think the select board is, is well aware of the, the recent history of this project. Um, but just to sort of recap for, um, for folks, um, we are in the process of re-evaluating the uh, construction method and design of the proposed animal shelter after we had gone out for general contractor bids back in December of 21, um, with a sort of onsite stick-built, um, design. Um, the bids came back way higher than anyone could have possibly anticipated. Um, and so we've done a lot of work under the hood of this project to try to figure out, um, any number of cost savings. And, uh, you know, one of the consequences of that is decision on the part of the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee to seek the services of a new owner's project manager, um, particularly one that had experience with modular construction. Um, it's a construction method that the, uh, the committee, uh, really feels could bear some fruit in terms of cost savings. And, um, we thought it was a good idea to, um, to, to make that change. Um, that's a decision that the select board, uh, blessed a few months ago, um, and we have been through a, um, an RFQ process um, to get, uh, some, some bidders for that, um, for that role. We received two responses to our solicitation, um, Atlantic Construction Management and Hill International. Um, they are two, uh, very good, very reputable, um, firms that have done a lot of work locally and, and regionally. Um, so, uh, both of the responses were responsive, um, according to our solicitation. And, um, the committee evaluated them, um, conducted interviews, uh, last Monday, I believe it was, um, checked references, evaluated the two respondents based on the selection criteria in the RFQ, and, uh, the committee voted to recommend to the select board to engage in negotiations with Hill International, um, which is one of the respondents. Um, they are a, um, construction management firm. They do a lot of projects in Massachusetts. I think one of the most relevant is probably, uh, their work with our neighbors in Quincy on their animal shelter project. Um, that one is a little bit bigger than ours, but shares a lot of similarities, the same architect, um, a lot of the same uh, site and, and funding type challenges, um, that, that we've experienced. Um, but they, they come with, with a host of, of other really relevant projects under their belts, um, including several public modular projects, um, here in the Commonwealth. So, um, the committee is, is, is confident in, in Hill's ability to, uh, to do a good job, um, as, as a project manager. Um, you know, both of the respondents, like I said, were, were, were good, um, but, you know, we, the committee felt that, um, you know, Hill, uh, kind of rose to the top, and so, uh, we'd be recommending the select board to um, engage in negotiations with them over a fee and to, to bring them on as our owner's project manager.
Thank you, Mr. Zarwinski. Any questions or comments for Tim, please, on this? Matter? Of longstanding consideration and concern? Seeing none? Uh, there is a proposed motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion. Um, I move to approve the recommendation of the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee to approve a contract with, what was the name of the company again?
Hill International.
Hill International as the owner, project manager.
Is there a second, please? Uh, you are muted, um, Ms. Musto, but I saw your hands.
I'll second it. Sorry.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle? Yes. Thank you. Our next item is discussion approval recommendation of the School Building Committee to approve a contract BSC Group for Survey and Engineering. And Sean is with us, uh, Sean Arrock, the Chair of the School Building Committee. Could he be moved up, please? Welcome, Mr. Arrock. Thank you for being with us this evening.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, my name is Sean Arrock. I'm the Chair of the, uh, Town School Building Committee. I'm also a town meeting member of Precinct Day. Uh, if I may, I have a short presentation. I'd just like to walk you through, um, the scope of services that we're requesting tonight for approval.
Thank you.
And just let me know when you can see it.
It's up.
All right. So as the committee's aware, um, the School Building Committee, uh, in August of last year identified a parcel on Gao Road. Uh, there were, we've identified for the site for our new school. Um, we, as of working through last year, um, our proposal was to provide an Article 97 land swap of the part of the parcel that you see in yellow, which is approximately 6.8 acres, uh, with some other parcels within the town. As, you know, a- as we're working on that parcel, I walked it with State Forester. Um, during that site walk, he identified, um, the ecological value of the site. So while last year we, we had a, a article in the support, uh, for converting this entire site uh, for the use of the school, uh, the School Building Committee came up, but we felt to be a better option. Uh, and to do that or to save the ecological, you know, valuable portion of the site, um, we came up with another option which caused us to withdraw our article last year. Uh, and the additional work associated with that is, is what we have for you tonight. So, uh, the map that you're looking at here is, uh, rotated a little bit counterclockwise, so if you, I'll give you a second to kind of reorient yourself. Um, but essentially what this is, this entails, the first part of the scope that we're asking BSC Group to do is identification of wetlands, uh, around the, uh, around Pine Tree Burke that's shown in the green line there. Uh, the historical documentation that we had showed it in the approximate location, uh, we're asking them to re-verify that. Uh, the two circles that are on the plan are small pieces of wetlands that we kind of saw while we were out there. Uh, part of the, the one along Gao Road was identified by Steve Ives of the Conservation Commission, uh, actually when we did the site walk last year. So as those wetlands are identified, uh, the next scope of work that we're asking BSC Group to do is engage their civil engineers to design essentially into conceptual road for realignment of Gao Road. Uh, by doing this, get my cursor working, by taking Gao Road that currently runs down and splits to two parcels and realigning it this way, what it allows us to do is utilize a portion of the Parks Parcel, uh, that is shown here on essentially the right side of the red line. And the red line is, uh, representative of the new road. Uh, and then a, a smaller portion of the conservation land, uh, by merging the two of those together, uh, we, we'll basically be able to create what we find to be a better site. Um, part of the work that also comes in here too is, you know, the remaining portion of the Parks Parcel. Uh, we have to do a boundary survey for that. Um, so there, there's a, there's a significant amount of survey work that's associated with this. The other part of the survey that we're doing, um, again, the, the red line or the realignment of Gao Road, uh, as you're seeing here is theoretical. We're waiting for the boundaries of the wetlands to be identified, and that would essentially be the constraint for what we'd be doing for this road. Um, we've asked BSC to kind of align the road as best they can to maximize this portion of the site that we could utilize. But knowing there's, um, you know, concerns from neighborhoods of Pine Tree Burke, we've also asked them to take whatever that initial concept of the road is, and then also offset it away from Pine Tree Burke 50 feet. Um, the, the areas you see in green are remaining parcels that 300-foot setback, saving the ecological valuable portion of the land parcel, uh, along with the, the kind of back corner that's, that abuts home egg. Um, the, the line work that you see here in yellow, blue, purple and cyan uh, are essentially offsets because again, not knowing what size this parcel is, we're not sure, you know, how less of a part, portion of the conservation land we have to take. So what we've asked BSC Group to do is provide boundary surveys for each one of these. Uh, so what that does is basically create, uh, four parcels that we'd have surveyed here. And then when the road is realigned, another four parcels for a total of eight options. Um, to walk you through the offsets that you're seeing here, um, the initial the initial boundary line with our property and Home Inc. is approximately right here. The, we're looking at going a maximum of a hundred and fifty foot setback, which is shown in purple. And the cyan line that's there is a built in zoning buffer, which is fifty feet. The purpose that we've also asked BSC Group to do is not only, you know, electronically survey these these sites. We've asked them to actually go out and stake and flag these sites so that when we do a site walk with folks, they don't have to have a map and kind of guess where they are. There'll be physical boundaries on there so they can actually see it when we walk in. So, you know, for us, this is all additional work from what we did before. It's taking us additional time, but overall, we feel it's a better project. They'll come out at the end of it. So we're surveying the wetlands. We're creating boundary parcels, realigning Gao Road. The contract that we're talking about tonight is a not to exceed contract. The contract value is two twenty five thousand seven hundred, which the School Building Committee has funding for, so we're not seeking any additional funding. And then with it with it as a not to exceed contract, our goal is whatever remaining value on there, we'd like to utilize to do a conceptual design of the school on the on the chosen parcel. And with that, I'll open up ten questions.
Thank you, Mr. Arrock. The floor is open to members of the Select Board. Ms. Musto?
Thank you. I was wondering on the map, could you show where the new field is in relation to those boundaries?
Sure.
In the new roadway?
So where the new boundary is, and it's tough to do on Zoom because this thing keeps popping up, but where Gao Road is here, the new field, Lower Gao Road, is off the page here, up up past the top. The, that project I've been involved with a little bit due to the realignment of this road. What happens is the boundaries of that project aren't affected by the realignment of this road. And actually, one of the good things that came out of one of our meetings that I have with Parks Department, the current access to Gao Road is this tight U-turn that's right here, that emergency vehicles have a tough time accessing. So by realigning this road, we can, we can basically provide better access down to it. The other portion of this project that's not, you know, as part of this proposal, but as we build the school and provide additional parking facilities in this area, it will address some of the parking concerns that go on down there.
Thank you.
Mr. O, I'm sorry, Ms. Musto, continue?
I just said, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Arrock, the land then could possibly from the property line with Home Inc. to, and my grandchildren would tell you, I'm terrible with my floral colors, but I think it's magenta. That could possibly then be green as well and preserved as conservation land. Is that correct assumption?
That it that is correct. So with the contract that we issued to BSC, if I may, I'll just switch to that. It's a little more detailed for the attachments. What we looked at, you know, the 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 first portion was, you know, the boundary surveys for that. So what we've asked them to do is what we call parcel one, which is, you know, the the property line would remain with Home Inc. Essentially with the fifty foot zoning buffer that would be applied to it. The next one would be a fifty foot buffer of conservation land and then an additional fifty foot buffer of zoning, essentially a hundred foot offset from Home Inc. And that portion that's in between Home Inc. and the school property would be conservation land. Further, we've got a hundred feet, again, creating a two hundred, a hundred and fifty foot buffer. A hundred and fifty feet is, you know, is our maximum that we're looking at. And again, with zoning, that would create essentially a two hundred foot buffer from there. Those are essentially the four parcels that we'd be doing. And then again, when the road got realigned fifty feet over, we repeat those four parcels again, separate boundary surveys for each one. So it's it's quite extensive.
Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is great, great work from the committee. Thanks so much, Sean. I'm going to make my pitch again that when we do the new design for the the school, that we think about putting a pool in there, since our town does not have a pool to use. So I would love to see that. I might be the only person, but if you guys could think about it, I would really appreciate it.
Okay.
So we have a a motion on the floor proposed, Mr. Zulus?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of the School Building Committee to approve a contract with BSC Group for Survey and Engineering.
And that would be with it notated that it would be signed by the Town Administrator?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item number, the next item, discussion approval, review of application of science free corridors in the town of Milton, Massachusetts is one meeting away from being finalized. So we'll defer that until our October five meeting. That'll bring us to item number thirteen. Discussion of the special town meeting Monday, December five, two thousand and twenty two. Maybe I can introduce that by saying that last night, Mr. Milano and I met with the Warren Committee for the first time and had an opportunity to do some preliminary discussion with them about potential warrant articles. And Nick, could I turn to you for a couple of comments in that regard, please?
Sure. It was nice to get to meet the Warren Committee members. I think most of them were there, just nearly all of them were there last night. So it was nice to see them. As the Chair mentioned, we did prize them of a few potential warrant, town meeting warrant articles. Obviously, the first one we discussed tonight, or rather, the second one discussed tonight about the Climate Action Plan. We also mentioned the one related to item number seven from tonight about the group is working for in terms of moving the previous question. We did mention a potential access road easement at seven twenty eight Randolph Ave for the proposed forty B project there. The Board of Appeals and the developer in that project have been talking about potentially adjusting the access to that project to come off the access road rather than directly onto Randolph Ave. It seems like that's a safer option for all parties. Still waiting to hear from both the Board of Appeals and the Planning Departments to confirm whether that would be coming. We did mention the possibility of a financial article, as is sometimes common at these fall town meetings. And on Thursday night, the Planning Board is going to be discussing the codification of the town's bylaws, as that's been outstanding, long running project. The town clerk and the building commissioner are speaking to the planning board on Thursday, so awaiting to hear how that conversation goes to see if that might be coming forward for December. I believe, Mr. Chair, that's everything in terms of this year. We did mention the historic district committees, potential recommendation for historic district to be coming, although we don't have a specified timeframe for that now, and likely wouldn't be ready for December anyway.
You touched all the points, and the Warren Committee was interested in knowing on that last note that Nick made, when we might have some insight into articles for the annual town meeting in May. Thank you, Nick. Any questions of? Mr. Milano? Seeing none. Our next item is a committee appointment. This is to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and it is the appointment to that committee from the Warren Committee. And Laurie Conley has been nominated by the Warren Committee to be their representative for the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. Do we have a motion to that effect? There is a task for any materials and related communications?
Sure, I'll make a motion, and this is a capital, to the Capitol Committee of Laurie Conley.
For a one-year term, correct?
For a one-year term.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus. Seeing no further discussion, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Next, we have discussion approval of one day liquid licenses, and I think we have five requests. Can we read these, bundle them, and have one vote to approve all of them simultaneously rather than go one by one? Is that acceptable? Or is that murky? The thumbs up from the Chair, the, I'm sorry, Town Council for the Chair, so I will take the liberty of reading them. Wakefield Arboretum, October, Family Fest, Saturday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty two. St. Agatha Church Gala Centennial Concert and Reception Friday, October seventh, twenty twenty two. Scott McKay, representing the Milton Farmers Market fundraiser at the Forbes House Museum, Wednesday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. Michelle de Lima, Harvest Conference at Hedges Field, Saturday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty two. The Eustace Estates in historic New England, Loud Naked in Three Colors, An Evening with the Curators, Sunday, October two, twenty twenty two. That's the five they've been read. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair, and and ask, did you say Loud Naked in Three Colors?
Loud Naked in Three Colors.
All right, well, I guess.
You'll have to attend to find out exactly.
I was gonna ask what cyan was before before Sean got off.
It's about the tattoos. It's a really great exhibit if anybody hasn't been up there yet.
All right. Okay, it has been moved by Mr. Zulus. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. It has moved and seconded. Seeing no further discussion, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. We are now with a discussion and approval for a proclamation for the one hundredth anniversary of St. Agatha Parish. I have a draft of the proclamation. I would suggest with the business that we have at hand, but unless anybody objects, I will not refrain from reading it, but ask for a motion for its adoption. It will be read at the anniversary mass and celebration, which will be this coming Sunday at eleven thirty A M.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Bradley?
Can can part of the motion be that the Select Board Chair sign on behalf of the Select Board?
I don't see why not. If that's what the Select Board prefers, there is a draft would move for everybody, but it's acceptable.
It just might be easier that if you sign on behalf of the Select Board, then Richard Wells, who's not present this evening, will still be included because he's a member of the Select Board, and therefore it wouldn't look like he was voting against something just because he wasn't here.
I understand exactly what you said. Touche. Excellent point.
Thank you.
Without objection, we will move, Ms. Musto?
I'm just going to suggest, is there a way that he'll be back in, is he going to be back in time to sign for that? I just feel like it's sort of nice that we all.
Point is that I would agree with that, except the point is that he's not able to vote on the proclamation.
So therefore, he can't sign.
Can't sign it, right?
But if Mr. Chair signs it on behalf of the entire Select Board, then all of us have signed it.
Seems fine for this one, sure.
And what do you think of that? And then listening below all the other members of the Select Board since signing on behalf of the Select Board. So sort of a middle vote. These middle votes can be very happy paths to take.
Watch out, Waze is going to get wind of it and start sending people down.
They already love Belzer Circle. I've been living with waves for years.
Well, maybe we should, I'm sorry, maybe we should wait to, we will just do it for this one, and then when Richard comes back, if there's another proclamation or something, then we can bring it up again. You know, we'll do it for this one, and then going forward, we'll just ask.
As long as Member Musto remembers that if another one comes up on a date that I can't be here, I would expect the same courtesy.
I think we would do that. Why wouldn't we?
I don't know.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have this, and I just want to ask Mr. Milano to make sure that we have recorded as a protocol. So that went in, essentially what we're saying, if I understand correctly, and I have been known to make mistakes, is that when we have a proclamation and a member of the board is not present, or two members of the board are not present when it is voted up, that it would be signed by the Chair, whoever he or she may be, with the members of the Select Board all listed. In instances where all members are present for the voting of a proclamation, all members will sign the proclamation. Is that?
Sure.
Move came out? Okay.
Great.
Great.
Perfect.
Thank you. So we can nominate, we seek nomination, we seek a motion on the proclamation.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the proclamation for the hundredth anniversary of St. Agatha's Church to be signed by the Chair of the Select Board on behalf of all the Select Board members.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Second, seconded by Ms. Musto, seeing no discussion. Mr. Zulus, Ms. Bradley? Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Okay. We are now ready for the Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Milano, I bet you couldn't wait till this point. So the floor is on yours.
Appreciate it. As I said last time, just want to say thanks to everybody for the very warm welcome. It's been a pleasure getting to get out there and see everybody. Just a couple of things that I've been out and about to, I was able to get down to the Farmers Market. My first week here, I was on the Warren Committee, as the Chair mentioned previously. I was up at the Library Trustees Meeting last week to hear the library report where actually three of the members of the board were able to be there. So it was a nice crew there.
We'll lose you, Nick?
Oh, sorry.
A little bit.
Just was at the Library Trustees, the last one I was mentioning. There are a couple upcoming events, both town-sponsored and some private ones. Wanted to mention the Council on Aging Fit for Life Walk, October first at nine A M. All funds do go to programs and services at the COA. Celebrate Milton is the next day in the afternoon on October second. That's at Pierce Middle School. As mentioned already, St. Agatha's is having a couple of events for their centennial. And then the Mike's Five K to Crush Substance Abuse, that the Milton Coalition and others are supporting is on October fifteenth. Those were the updates from me. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Milano? Thank you. Cheers for it. I have no items to report on at this particular time. Most have been covered directly or indirectly already. Public comment response. Any comments in response, Mr. Zulus and then Ms. Bradley?
Mr. Chair, I I don't see future agenda items, so I so I would just ask that we put on a future agenda, perhaps the next agenda, a reconsideration of the Youth Task Force in light of the comments and what we've certainly heard beyond that. And also, there were a couple of things that need to be corrected for the record that that weren't accurate, that were that were said last time, so we might want to correct the record. So I'd ask that be on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ms. Musto and then Ms. Bradley. Did I get that right?
No, it was opposite.
Okay, Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to, I I would like to second what Member Vice Chair Zulus just said. I was very disheartened to learn that the Youth Task Force was disassembled, canceled last meeting. It is, it's something that I believe that youth should have a voice, and the more youth that are engaged with civics, the better we are as a democracy for our country. And so I was really disheartened when I learned of that. So I would like to second Vice Chair Zulus's And so I was really disheartened when I learned of that. So I would like to second Vice Chair Zulus's recommendation to put it back on the agenda for however you said it, Mr. Zulus, you said it so eloquently. For a revote or whatever it is with some tweaking. I don't know what he means about the miscommunications. Again, I wasn't there. But when I did find this out, I was very, I was really saddened that that our kids were disenfranchised, because I do think it's something that that we need to continue, especially since Ms. Musto and I are still going through the list of which which committees are active or not. So before we start taking out our red pen, please let us do our work, and 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 we will get back to you. But this committee is something I feel very strongly about. And I would encourage and hope that the Chair would consider putting it back on the agenda. Thank you.
Really? Thank you, Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to this a little bit. So the committee had done a great job, and they helped secure the Wildcat Den, which was awesome. I think that was wonderful. They did a great job on that. The intent of it was to, for the committee was to, it met its goal. You know, it's sort of like when you had the town administrative search committee, it it met its goal. And that's what it sounded like with this committee. As far as, you know, disenfranchising kids, that was never the intent. And I think that there are a lot of opportunities for young people in this town to be involved. There are school committees, subcommittees that kids are involved, there's student government. We have, the Board of Health just hired a social worker that's to work with everybody in the town. I know the police department hired one, because we were talking earlier about things like anxiety and depression, which are real concerns with everybody. There's the Milton Youth Advocate for Change group through the Coalition. And, you know, when I was looking at the committee, I noticed that they hadn't met since October of two thousand twenty. And I was concerned about that because, number one, I went on the website, and I think we should ask them to please put in their minutes. There were no minutes there. I don't know if they've submitted them, and they were never put on the website, so that was one thing. The other thing with it was that through COVID, that's when people really needed help. That's when the kids really needed help. And so I was a little disturbed to see that that wasn't an active committee at that point. But the bottom line is, is that we we looked at the committees. You and I are going to look at the committees, but for this particular one, it was to recharge the committee, and we had a vote, a democratic vote.
Ladies and gentlemen, members, colleagues, we have a request to have this on a future agenda item. It is not on this agenda, so it would not be appropriate for us to discuss it until it is on the next agenda. And that I'm sure that we'll all be well prepared to do. We want to keep within the appropriate bounds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Future meeting dates, we have scheduled for October five, which was mentioned earlier this evening, followed by October eighteen. We have our retreat coming up, which is gonna be an important retreat. I'll work with Nick on a solicitation of agenda items for the retreat in the formulation of a three-hour work session with anticipated outcomes or my seat orders. I would like to, Mr. Milano, wrap up the time we're holding, nine o'clock to about three o'clock in that afternoon, two, three-hour segments. Make sure that we know when everybody's available, and hopefully we will have all five of us, we should have all five of us for this work session. We always have had in the past, and we should this time. Ms. Musto, on the start?
No, I just wanted to put it down. I didn't realize it was still up there. Sorry.
Okay. Any comments, any questions from anybody? At this time, we'll be going into executive session. And just to explain for the general public, we will adjourn from executive session. Come out of exec, well, we will this protocol, this will be adjourned from. Maybe we should adjourn from this public meeting, go into executive session, adjourn from the executive session, and then go into the Governor's Stotan Trust. Would that be the right protocol to follow, or could we just adjourn from executive session, and then we can be to go into the Governor's Stotan Trust? Mr. Freitag, could you weigh in on this so that we do the right thing in the right way?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. You've got two items on your agenda that are public session items, one of the executive session items.
Yes, we do. So. Thanks. You're right. So we will enter into executive session at this time, and then we'll adjourn after the public items, correct?
Going to, you're gonna adjourn to executive session, and then adjourn executive session, return to open in session for the remaining. Adjourn the select board's meeting, and then enter into the meeting for the trustees of the Governor's Stotan Trust.
Good. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, so at this time, executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Paragraph twenty-one, Section A subsection, sixty percent of the purchase exchange lease of value of real property of the Kidder Bridge Library located at one oh one Blue Hills Parkway. And I understand, Ms. Musto, you'll be recusing yourself from this particular item. I move to enter into executive session to consider the purchase exchange lease of value of real property of the Kidder Bridge Library, one oh one Blue Parkway, based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board. The select board will turn to open session. Is there a motion on this item, please?
I'm sorry, did you make the motion, Mr. Chair?
I did. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus, that is moved and seconded. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Next item on executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Paragraph twenty-one, Section A subsection, says to consider the purchase exchange lease of value of real property of the East Milton Library located at three thirty-four H.O. Road. Ms. Musto will be recusing herself from this item as well. The motion is, I move to enter into executive session to consider the purchase exchange lease of of value of real property of the East Milton Library located at three thirty-four H.O. Road, based upon my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board. Is there a second, please?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, Mrs. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Paragraph twenty-one, Section A subsection, says to discuss the purchase exchange lease of value of real property at forty-one Wall Street. I move to enter into executive session to consider the purchase exchange lease of value of real property located at forty-one Wall Street, based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the select board. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus. See no discussion, Mrs. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Item number fourteen was, twenty-four, rather was executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty, A, Paragraph twenty-one, Section A subsection three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. We do not have identified the bargaining unit for this particular agenda item, so there's a question whether or not we have to defer this until such time as we do. Mr. Freitag, can we get your advice on this, please?
Yeah, it should be deferred, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Freitag. The next item is executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Paragraph twenty-one, Section A subsection three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation against the Massachusetts Pay Transit Authority, MBTA, related to the conditions of the stairs at the MBTA station located at Adams Street, Milton, Mass. Is there a second, please? I'm sorry, I have to read the motion. I move to enter into, it's getting late. I move to enter into executive session to discuss litigation strategy against the Massachusetts Pay Transit MBTA Authority, MBTA, related to condition of the stairs at the MBTA station located at Adams Street, Milton, Mass., based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board. The select board will return to open session. Is there a second place to this motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Mr. Zulus?
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes. My fault, settle.
I know. Mike, you're starting to sound like me. What does that mean?
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Okay, we can enter into executive session at this time.
Thank you, and the Milton Select Board is returned to open session. It has two items of business to carry forward for votes from the executive session, which was adjourned just a moment ago. And the first is a motion to file litigation against the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority, or MVTA. Is there such a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to authorize Town Council to file a lawsuit against the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority regarding the condition of the stairs at the MVTA station located at Adam Street, Milton, Massachusetts.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Seeing no discussion, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Next item of business is with respect to a revised First Amendment to the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Milton and eighty-eight Wolf Street LLC with the notation of an amendment adopted. Is there a motion to disavow it?
Mr. Chair, can you repeat the...
I have it if you want.
Do you have it, Mike?
I have it. I have it. I'll move to approve the execution of revised First Amendment to the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Milton eighty-eight and eighty-eight Wolf LLC.
I'll second that.
And do you want to know as amended?
As amended, yes.
Thank you. All right, it's moved. The second is in agreement?
Yes.
See, no, he is, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle? Yes. Okay. Looks like we are ready to entertain a motion to adjourn from public session, after which, so that the public knows, we will be moving as trustees of the Governor-Stoughton Fund into business with that particular trust. So is there a motion to adjourn from public session, please?
I'll make a motion to adjourn from public session.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley, for seconding. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. Okay, are we all ready? It's ten oh five, and we are calling to order a meeting of the trustees of the Governor-Stoughton Trust. Discussion, item number one on the agenda, is discussion with Town Council. We got any Governor-Stoughton Trust background in eligible uses of land sale proceeds. Mr. Freitag, can we turn to you, please, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Kevin Freitag from the... Can you hear me clear?
You're breaking up a bit, Kevin.
All right, let me just see if I can make an agenda.
We cannot hear you. Negative. No, you want to try telephone? Nothing yet. Shawnee, you still with us?
If you're talking to me, then yes. I do not see Mr. Freitag. It looks like...
I think he logged out to log back in.
I'll keep an eye out for him, then.
Yeah, that's my guess, too. Thank you, Kevin. Can you hear us? You're on mute.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes, you are back. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that.
So just to reiterate, this will be a discussion with Town Council. We got any Governor-Stoughton Trust background in eligible uses of land sale proceeds.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair, again, Kevin Freitag from the Office of Town Council. So by way of background, William Stoughton was the former governor, a former governor of the Massachusetts Bay Colony in the late sixteen hundreds. He was born in sixteen thirty-one and he passed on in seventeen oh one. And in his will, there was a provision upon his death that forty acres of land that he owned, which is located on Canton Ave. and the Town of Milton, be given to the town to be used and improved thereon for the benefit, quote unquote, "for the benefit of the poor of the town of Milton," close quote. So thereafter, from the seventeen hundreds into the eighteen hundreds, that land, which was known as the Town Farm, was essentially used as an area where residents of Milton could farm their own food and even live. In fact, there were multiple buildings that were built along what is now Governor-Stoughton Lane that for a time were inhabited by the, the, the quote unquote, "poor" of the town of Milton. Eventually, though, in the nineteen hundreds, the use of the Town Farm as a farm ceased. The buildings were still occupied, and in fact, I believe only one of those buildings presently remains. It's currently occupied by the Milton Animal Shelter as a tenant. The other buildings have since been demolished for safety purposes. But as the sort of time progressed into the nineteen hundreds and that land was used less and less as a farm, the trustees of the trust... less and less as a farm, the trustees of the trust, which are the select board members as trustees, so you're actually wearing two hats pursuant to the terms of the Governor Stoughton's will, you act by way of the select board in the position of trustee of the Governor's Stoughton Trust. The trustees of the trust sort of started to question whether or not the purposes of that trust were still capable of being fulfilled insofar as using the land for a farm for the poor of Milton. So sometime in the mid to late two thousands, there was some discussion at the town level and through the trustees as to whether or not perhaps a sale of some of the land would be appropriate. But in order to do that, there needed to be an action filed with the Norfolk County Probate Court. It's called a see-prey action, and basically what that action seeks is relief from the terms of a trust, which was exactly what the trustees were looking for in this case, because they had made the determination that the, the terms of the trust could no longer be fulfilled, but that there was perhaps some other purpose that was in line with the intent of Governor Stoughton when he provided those acres to the town that could be fulfilled, but that they needed some relief from the specific terms of the trust in order to get there. So they filed an action in Norfolk Superior Court. The Attorney General's Office, as it must, was named as a, as a party in that complaint and then eventually actually answered and agreed with the position taken by the town that a portion of that property could be sold. So of the forty acres, at the time of, this was in about two thousand and twelve, there were thirty-six acres left, excuse me, thirty-four acres left. I believe six of the, six of the forty was actually taken by the state through eminent domain at some point in time, leaving the town itself with six acre, excuse me, thirty-four acres. And the idea was whether the trustees could sell a portion of those thirty-four acres and then use those funds to fulfill the purposes of the trust. So the actions filed, the AG's office agrees, and the court eventually agreed as well. That was in approximately two thousand and thirteen, agreed that the, the land or a portion of the land could be sold. And then those sale proceeds would be essentially treated in the same fashion as the land, which is to say that the, the proceeds would be dealt with as an endowment over which the trustees would serve as, as overseers, as trustees to invest those funds and then use the interest or the income generated by those funds, but not the funds themselves. The interest or the income generated by those funds could be used by the trustees to fulfill the purpose of the trust. And so over the years, the trustees have used the interest to do just that. It is my understanding that the, the sale of the land, which was sold to a developer, Pulte was the developer, and almost all the land was sold. I think only about perhaps three to four acres of the thirty-four acres still remain in possession of the trustees. But the, the balance was sold to Pulte for approximately five million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Currently, the Governor's Stoughton Trust has five million, four hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and eight dollars in its account. So that's five million, four seventy-three, one oh eight in its account. So according to the terms of the trust, the trustees are now, as they have been since the sale, to use the interest or the income generated by the, the sale proceeds for the benefit of the poor of Milton. So right now, the trustees have approximately a hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and eight dollars available to them to be used in accordance with that directive from the trust. The, the question of how those funds can be used is really a fact-driven sort of analysis. It's a case-by-case basis. I know in the past, funds have been used for things like the food pantry. I would state that whether or not those funds can be used for affordable housing is a somewhat more complicated question. The AG has sort of weighed in on that matter in, not directly, but indirectly in the sense that the remaining three acres that are, that are at the Governor's Stoughton Trust are being considered to be used for a number of different purposes, including perhaps affordable housing. And the AG's office has been working with the town to determine exactly what that would mean, who would be given access to that housing, and whether the individuals that would be given access to that housing would, would be consistent with the terms of the trust, meaning that they be considered the quote-unquote "poor" of the Town of Milton. So that question of affordable housing versus poor of the Town of Milton is, is not simple. There's, there's a few nuances there, and it's something that always, and has been looked at pretty carefully over the years. And the AG's office, like I said, is sort of weighing in on that as we speak. So that's just a, a summary or background of that, of the trust and of Governor Stoughton. I'm happy to answer any questions that you, that you may have.
The floor is open, please. Thank you for that background, Kevin. I think it was particularly helpful for Erin and Roxanne, as they are now known, lead members of the Governor's Stoughton Trust. Ms. Bradley?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Kevin, can you go over again for me the piece about how the trust can only use the interest piece of that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just, I got confused there.
Yes, so if you were to look at the terms of the, the, of the, the will itself that created the trust, it said that the land was to be... The actual quote is that this, that the, the improvement thereof, this is in reference to the land, that the improvement thereof to be for the benefit of the poor of the Town of Milton. And what that has always sort of indicated to us is that you hold on to the land, but whatever you do with it, you do in, in a way that is for the benefit of the town, whether that's, you know, renting out portions of the property or using that land in some other way that benefits the poor of the, the Town of Milton, that is the idea. That's permissible, but the, the corpus of the trust, the, the actual land is not to be, is not to be given away or sold. And that's why the town had to go and seek specific relief from the AG's and from the Norfolk Probate Court to be able to sell the land at all, because that, that wasn't in, in line with the terms of the trust.
So we sold the land, and we got the approval, and we made a profit on that land?
Well, you, when you say profit, the town didn't pay anything for it to begin with. So it got, it got five million, three hundred thousand dollars when it sold it.
Right, 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 right. Okay, so, but that would be a profit, because it was a gift. So anything would be a profit from starting at zero, if you start at zero. So you had, we had to get a special thing from the courts that said that we could do that. My question is, is what happens to the money? Where is that money that we, as a town, got from the sale?
So currently, it's held in an account by the treasurer, and that, and the treasurer pursuing to Jim McCall, if that's correct. Yes, so he invests those funds, much like he invests other, other funds that are held by the town for investment purposes. He has a number of accounts that, you know, are similar to this, where the, the funds themselves cannot be touched, but the income or the interest generated by them serves a certain purpose.
Okay. I think I understand. But I'm, I understand, but now I'm confused about another issue. We've been receiving a lot of emails from people requesting the three hundred thousand dollars be put in the Affordable Housing Trust. Where did they come up with that number?
That, if I may, Mike, do you want to address that?
Please.
No, but, but if you want to do it, that's fine.
That came from a request made by the Affordable Housing Trust of the Select Board approximately a year ago.
Okay.
The Select Board requested additional information relative to the purposes of the request. Did receive that, and it is one of the attachments to this item that you have in today's documents. Mike?
And just to add, the three hundred thousand, a, a year ago, there was more interest income. So the, the Governor's Stoughton Trust had more to give, because there was more, we can, we can appropriate, or we can, we can grant anything above five point three million dollars. We had more interest income last year, so I think that's where the three hundred thousand are, the, you know, as the markets have gone down, so has the, so has the, the, the amount available under the Governor's Stoughton Trust.
Okay, and that information, Mr. Chair, that you were just talking about, is that the one that was sent to us at like four fifteen this afternoon?
It could have been, no, it's in the attachment for this meeting, I believe, the...
Okay.
Was sent out, and then a couple of days ago. It's the first attachment under this item.
Okay.
Actually, under item number three.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Musto?
Thank you. I have a couple of quick questions. One is, does the Affordable Housing Trust currently have money in there, that committee, or the trust? And if so, how much? That's my first question.
We addressed that. The answer is yes, and we saw that figure today, I believe.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Approximately seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and that includes the eighty thousand dollar appropriation that was approved at this year's town meeting. So seven hundred and twenty-five, but that includes the appropriation from this year.
Okay, thank you. What specific amounts have we used from it? I know that you said that we've used some for different things. Can you give a little synopsis of what we've used it on in the past? And my third question is, can this, if we decided to do anything at that location, can, I, I mean, a lot of the older folks in town that are getting forced out of their homes by prices of things are interested in more development for that age group. I'm wondering if that's one of the uses that can be, if it's for older people that are struggling? Those, those are my two questions.
Mrs. Zulus?
Mr. Mr. Chair, I, I see in the attending, we have the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, Ms. Kramer, so perhaps if we brought her in, she may be, be able to help with some of those questions.
That'd be great. Can we move up Julie Kramer, please? She's now a panelist.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Milano has his hand up, just so you know.
Thank you, Mr. Milano.
I'm just going to address Ms. Musto's first question. Last, in two thousand and twenty-two, dispersed from the fund was funds to the, or excuse me, Milton Community Food Pantry, as well as funds to Milton Hospital, and I'm missing the third one, which was... So the group for the, I'm forgetting the name of it. Sorry, I don't have familiarity, but the group that is, folks next door from Town Hall.
Milton Residence Fund.
There you go, Milton Residence Fund. I'm sorry. Thank you.
And what was the total amount?
It's, give me one moment. I'll pull it. I have it here. I'm not, I can get back to it.
Thank you.
Well, Nick is doing that. Welcome, Julie.
Good evening.
Great to have you with us. This Julie is, for those of you who may not know, her, the Chair of the Milton Affordable Trust. Judy, Julie, would you like to introduce yourself in comments?
Sure.
I think we have a question already on the table for you that you probably heard.
Yep, great, thank you. Good evening. My name is Julie Kramer. I live at fifty-eight Frothingham Street. I am currently the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, the Milton Affordable Housing Trust. I was previously a member of the Governor's Stoughton Land Trust Committee, you know, at which we worked to find the proper use of the land. We were a town-appointed committee. The town did sell a large portion of the property, as, as was stated previously. The two things I'd like to point out, you know, first and foremost, there is still some structure on the four acres. Part of the agreement with Pulte was they were going to move and preserve the pest house, which is a historic, a, a structure of historic significance. So that is still on the four acres that was remained from the sale to Pulte. I think we know the housing that's up there now, very exclusive, expensive housing, a great, you know, way to increase our tax base, for sure. But the decision to sell the land and use those funds for the poor of Milton was obviously a decision made by the town and the trustees. The consideration we have in front of you for three hundred thousand dollars to go into the Affordable Housing Trust was not specifically because the trust had carried some significant interest, but it was the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was in consideration for obtaining a permanent easement. So Pulte had agreed to, to purchase the land for five million dollars, and that was what was brought forth, and the agreement that that five million dollars should remain in trust in perpetuity, and the interest of which would be used to help the poor of Milton, was, was a decision made, right? The three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was, you know, a, a great negotiation by the town for a permanent easement for the Pulte development. It was an easement for runoff, and they had to run some lines, and, you know, that portion can't be built on. So it was a valuable piece of land that Pulte paid for. So in my mind, that easement represents a piece of the funds that could go to benefit affordable housing. I, you know, I'm not an attorney. I don't claim to be one. I'm just here speaking for the Affordable Housing Trust and folks who live in Milton that are going to be displaced or may be displaced, and even folks who want to live in Milton, right? So the whole notion that the funds were for the poor of Milton is a, it's, it's a, it's a, you know, it was Governor Stoughton's will, you know, he's not here to defend it. But I would say the money going to the food pantry, you don't have to necessarily show that you live in Milton to use the food pantry. I know plenty of folks who go to the Milton Food Pantry who don't live here. I, I think it's a wonderful gift that the town gives. I would never, never speak against the food pantry, the Milton Residence Fund, the hospital we have in town that serves the needs of our neighbors, our friends, our community. What we're simply asking for here is some funds to support affordable housing in Milton. I can't promise you those housing units are for the folks that live in Milton. I would hope that when it word is out that we're building affordable housing in this beautiful town, I would hope that people who knew, people who lived here, who are now displaced, can come back and live here. That would be a wonderful goal of ours, of our, our town. I would also just like to point out that the five million dollars is an incredible amount of money for this town, an incredible opportunity for this town to serve the needs of the poor of Milton, but this town is having less and less poor of Milton residing in town because they can't afford to live here. And so I would ask that as a permanent gesture for the use of these funds to make permanent affordable housing here, that I'm certain the town could be proud of, and I imagine Governor Stone could be support and behind, since his intent initially for the farm... support and behind, since his intent initially for the farm was to house the poor of Milton. And we did for many years, house folks, you know, have folks living in those in those houses, the pest house, you know, other houses up there. Folks were living in those units. Long-standing residents for a long period of time, and they were paying below market rent. And that was an incredible gift, again, from the town. So I can also
Go back to Roxanne. I'm sorry, go ahead, Julie, one other point?
One last thing, if I may. We do have about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the trust, in the Affordable Housing Trust. Almost half of that came from the Affordable Housing Trust asking the folks who built the units up at Woodlot Road, those beautiful homes, when they had to do inclusionary units, which they were able to do off-site, was allowed for by permit. You know, they didn't do anything wrong. They were, they gave us the funds from the sale of those two units. So those two units generated about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars that, due to the work of the Affordable Housing Trust, came back to us by way of a request because they were building three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of homes for the one point seven, eight, nine million dollar homes they were building on the lot. So.
Thank you. Roxanne, you had a question on the table that Julie might be able to help with. Could you bring that back? And you're muted.
So my, my questions were, one was, you know, a lot of the older people that live in town that still want to stay in town, can, can some of that be used towards housing for them? If they're, you know, low to moderate income?
Sure, so, you know, we, we don't have a plan for that, for that lot yet, right? For those three acres or so. My hope would be that we could build some housing up there that would be affordable housing, rental housing, and make it available for, you know, a range of household incomes and a range of household sizes. There are some parameters around that relative to the funds we would use to build that housing, or a developer might build that housing with. And so there is, you know, there's a requirement for the size of the homes, the mix of the homes, depending on how it's permitted. And, and if the housing would be restricted to elderly. So those are all sort of things that have to be worked out by the developer and, and the program behind their development. But certainly, it could, it could have some one-bedroom apartments up there, you could have two-family, I mean, two-bedroom family-style units, two and three-bedroom.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions?
I'm not at this time.
Thank you. And Ms. Bradley and then Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So if I understand this correctly, we sold a lot of our acreage to a developer who made multimillion-dollar homes. And in return, we got five point three million dollars, which are supposed to help the poor of the town. And right now, there are multimillion-dollar homes on the Governor Stoughton land, which just on the surface of that is quite remarkable. So from what I understand that we're voting on tonight is whether or not we want to put the measly amount of three hundred thousand dollars into helping the trust so that they can make sure that they get top-notch designers and architects so that we can have the best facility for the actual poor of the town. So if I'm understanding that correctly, and Julie, we don't have any designs right now. We are just in the stage of, let's get some money so we can actually say the town is serious about our affordable housing. And if we do this, could it bring up our affordable housing by, I don't know, a percentage or one point five percent? What do you think?
I, I think any housing built in Milton, affordable housing built in Milton can be added to the S H I. With the appropriate steps, with the appropriate funding. And, you know, local funding is key to making sure local needs are met.
Absolutely.
And without local funding.
But help us with not only our affordable housing, which we're in the gutter with, as we all know, thank you ninety, forty Bs, I mean, and the Governor Stoughton actual intent can be made to fruition because we're actually going to put some housing that the poor people can afford instead of multimillion-dollar things. I have one specific question, Mr. Chair, and that is, what exactly did we give to Milton Hospital from this fund, considering that Milton Hospital doesn't pay any taxes here? So what are we contributing to at the hospital that needed our money for the poor?
I don't have that answer at hand, but we'll get
I would like that answer, seeing as Milton Hospital, you know, this, the pilot issue has been an issue for many years.
Right, and I have not only put that in my notes, but I've underscored it, so I'm with you on that question. Mr. Zulus, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as, as, as further background, the Affordable Housing Trust has been asking for funding since I've been on the board. So in my view, long overdue. And two questions. Well, really one question. One, well, two, one is, one is to ask Kevin to weigh in on the interesting idea of the easement not being part of the corpus. The easement, the three hundred and fifty thousand, the easement not being part of the corpus. And then second, my understanding is that there was two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and three dollars in the Governor Stoughton Trust before the Pulte sale. And so so could we take the view that we, that since that was in there before the sale, we have access to that? In other words, could we, could we take the view that the loss of the, the, the loss in the market, which has diminished the amounts in the, in the, in the Governor Stoughton account, is attributable to the five point three, but there was two hundred and ninety-eight thousand in there before Pulte. So we certainly should have access to that funding. I, I shouldn't say certainly, that's the question. Do we have access? So, so, so then we would have, seems to me, we would have two possibilities for funding. One is the hundred and twenty-three thousand that is north of the five point three at this point. And then two is the two hundred and ninety-eight thousand that was in there before the Pulte sale. And then perhaps third, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the easement, that's a, that's a, that's another question. And then I would, I would just add also that we typically, Nick will give us the numbers, but I think we typically, we might have done more during COVID, but I think we typically give Milton Residence Fund about thirty-five thousand and the food pantry, something less than that. So, so we probably need, so if we were to distribute some funds, seems to me, we need to, we need to make an allowance for that. I don't remember what the hospital issue was, that, my, my, my memory is that that was during COVID and it was related to COVID. That, we haven't done that every year. We typically have done Milton Residence Fund and Food Pantry. I think that, I, my memory is that that was a one-off, but we can find out.
Okay, so we have a request for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Kevin, what is the amount that we have that is disposable?
So that's, that's a good question, Mr. Chair. Based on what I just heard from Julie, I, I'm not certain. I think I need to go back and take a look at whether or not that three hundred and fifty thousand, it was obtained in exchange for the easement rights, is something that can be spent. I think that that is the first question. And I, coincidentally, I was supposed to talk with the, the attorney at the AG's office that's in charge of these, these questions of specifically, and who we've been dealing with, and this is a gentleman by the name of Jonathan Green. He and I are supposed to talk tomorrow, so I can touch base with him on these exact issues when I talk to him. And also whether or not, in his view, the, you know, the the interest is, it's permissible to spend the interest in the way that's being requested too. I can find out if they have an opinion on that. And the third question, I think, which is seemingly one more of accounting than, you know, than a legal issue, is one that I could follow up with Jim McCall if on tomorrow to see whether he can make a determination as to whether or not that three hundred thousand dollars that was originally in the trust before the sale is still there and available to the trustees.
So we have some questions to be answered. Ms. Fagan, did you have your hand up? No. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could add too, I thought that the funds that were given to the Milton Hospital were funds that were used to pay for individuals that showed up at the hospital that weren't able to pay for medical care that they were seeking. I may be mistaken about that, but I, I thought that that was part of the reasoning along the, along the way.
That, that was my recollection, but I definitely wanted to ascertain that before we confirmed.
But I can confirm that as well.
Please do, Kevin, because that, that's even more interesting because every hospital has a free care pool. Every hospital has a free care pool. And so I would be even more interested if they were using money from this to cover expenses that could have been covered out of their free care pool for residents of the town, since they use so much of our services. And we don't get reimbursed for that. So I would be interested in that. Thanks.
Thank you for that. So where we are at this point appears to be one where Kevin has to obtain a couple of pieces of information for us for an action to be taken. Is that where everybody else is on the Select Board? Mr. Zulus?
Mr. Chair, along those lines, could I ask that this, that we, we convene another meeting in the, the Governor Stoughton Trustees at our next Select Board meeting?
You certainly can. This would be October five. Julie, could you make yourself available at that time, do you think?
Yes.
And Kevin, is it reasonable to expect that we might have answers to those questions for October five's meeting?
Absolutely. And in fact, I was just going to suggest too, in the past, Julie has been on some of the calls that we've had with Jonathan Green regarding the use of the property up there. And I'm, you know, I'm happy to sort of extend the same courtesy here when we're talking about the use of this interest. Just so that if he has any questions about what the funds would be used for by the Affordable Housing Trust, that we get those answered. And we have those answers at the next meeting.
I, I would be open to that.
Thank you. One and all. It seems like we're at a very reasonable place right now, and will be turned on October five. Any other comments or questions on this important matter? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to adjourn? The meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stone Trust.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Is there a second? Ms. Musto?
Yep, I'll second.
Roll call, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. And gratitude to everybody involved. Thank you. Have a great evening, everyone.